Any moment.
All right. Councilmember Wilcox.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present.
Mayor Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Simmons. Councilmember Jones Chance.
Present.
Six present or is a quorum?
Thank you. Do we have a motion to excuse?
Omo.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Aye.
I saw your mouth. Okay, all right. Clerk Alingo, would you?
Yes, council, the next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
I would move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is this a voice vote?
Yes, a voice vote is fine for agenda approval.
Right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Mayor Pro Tim Brown, are you voting?
Sorry, hi, my apologies, I, aye.
That's okay, all right. It happens to us. Okay, well, the agenda's approved, so let's move forward, please.
Uh, council, the next item on the agenda is the work session from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM regarding watershed development costs associated with remediation.
And I believe Mr. Myers is going to lead us through that session, so Mr. Myers, it's, you're on.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. To give kind of everyone a little bit of context, and working with the mayor over the past few months, we've really realized that there's, there's some questions, and a lot of time, people don't always know what to ask when it comes to development, and when it comes to brownfield remediation. And so I've kind of looked into my personal contacts to kind of figure out what, what's the best way to do this is. So, we have two presentations that are going to be given. The first one is about actual development. So, when I worked at the MEDC, I worked with Shannon Morgan, who has had a few different jobs, but, but she's a developer. And so her and her partner Jill are here to actually discuss what it takes to build a house. I think there's a lot of questions on, why does it cost so much? Well, you know, what are some of the unknown costs? And how does somebody actually go about building a brand-new house? Something that we've actually had no one do here in the city in a very long time. And now that we have a lot of interest, it's definitely going to be helpful to let everyone know. I know, Councilmember Jones Chance definitely probably understands this, maybe a little bit better based on his, his business, but it's always good to get a refresher to actually learn from people who do it, um, how it actually gets done. And so they're going to be our first presentation, and then following them, there will be time for, for, for back and forth, obviously, that's why it's a work session. Following them, we have Nathan Vogt from Washtenaw County, who's our brownfield specialist, and understands, uh, the city, brownfield, and he also used to have Andy in my office as his physician. So, definitely very well-versed. And so, he's going to talk about how we, um, how we clean up brownfields, and what brownfield TIF is, and what it means. And it's a very, um, basic level, because obviously there's going to be other times for us to get way more in the weeds, but I do think it's important to let everyone know what it takes to build a house. So, when people bring up questions about, about costs and everything like that, it's, it's a lot easier. So, um, I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, because I believe Shannon and Jill have some intro slides on what they're going to, on who they are, so I don't want to, I don't want to steal that, but I don't know who's leading it, Shannon or Jill, but, um, they also have access. Andrew, do they have access to share their screen?
I can give them access. Who needed to share their screen?
I do.
And Nathan's going to need it as well.
Okay, you should be able to share your screen now.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you all for, uh, having us here today. Try to, I can't do this in presentation mode, actually. I'm Jill Ferrari. I'm a managing partner of Renovare Development. Shannon Morgan is here with me. She is another managing partner. We are a real estate development company that works throughout the state of Michigan, but we're based in Detroit. We focus on transformational projects that are designed to meet a community need. We'll talk a little bit more in a minute about our backgrounds, but through Renovare, our goal is to develop projects that do more than provide housing or provide empty office space. We are looking to work very closely with municipalities to create programming within these projects that meet housing, or local economic development, or other needs. We have large projects across the state right now that focus on workforce development, where we're working with municipalities, but also with state workforce development agencies. Together, Shannon and I have over 50 years of experience. I am a licensed attorney, former practicing attorney. I've done brownfield work all over the state. We're going to walk through a few of our projects that Shannon and I have both worked on. And I am the former head of Community Development for Wayne County, Michigan, where I handled all of our CDBG home and other funding that, Ipsilene Macy, through Washtenaw County. But also, I was the Vice President of Acquisitions for a large brownfield redevelopment company. So, I've worked on brownfields, both here and in other states across the country. And locally, I had Michigan's Urban Land Institute District, and have developed their Women's Leadership Initiative, and I'm currently developing their Diversity Equity and Inclusion Initiative. Shannon, do you want to introduce yourself and walk into the next slides?
Well, thank you for having us. Like Jill, I have been in the development business for 25 years, working across the country, but predominantly focused here in Michigan. In my former role, I had worked for a national home building development company. Some of you may know, Crosswinds Communities. I've completed over 20,000 units of housing in my career. And we're going to kind of get in what housing looks like for different municipalities. Like Jill, I do co-chair the Women's Leadership Initiative at the Urban Land Institute, and sit on the National Steering Committees for the National Brownfield Coalition, as well as Smart Growth America. The way that we look at projects, as Jill said, our projects are usually very comprehensive, and they're designed to meet community needs. So unlike your typical models, when you're looking at multifamily developer, or single-family developments that are coming in, we're really trying to solve community-based issues. Are we looking for specific product-type missing middle? Are we working with different segments? And so, what we do bring is a whole host of tools that make our developments really pencil across the gamut. These are some of the tools and programs that we're pretty comfortable working in. Just, we, we provided some of our experiences, Jill said, were statewide. You know, I've done a lot of work, and so has Jill, in the city of Detroit, but most recently completed a lot of historic properties. One was a renovation of a historic orphanage in Marquette, Michigan. That was a 9% MISHDA deal for veterans. Another, just north of, of Grand Rapids, was the conversion of a school building into senior apartments.
Oops, sorry about that.
Other projects, mixed-use, missing-middle, live-work, and Birmingham off the Royton Rail District at Eaton Street Station, the first new urbanism project in, in Michigan, which was also a $9 million brownfield cleanup, Mason-run, and had several hundred units of housing.
The next four projects are projects that I've included, because they were all very creative in their use of different tools and incentives. For the Northville Psychiatric Hospital, I was the Vice President of Acquisitions for the company that originally gained title from, from the township back in 2004. We utilized brownfield TIF in a very creative way through the Wayne County Land Bank, to maximize all the eligible activities. It took a long time to get this project off the ground, but the financing package was complete several years ago. The Island Lakes at Taylor Project is a single-family home development. This was a retention basin that was publicly owned in Taylor, and we worked with the municipality to reconfigure the basin, so that we could add developable, developable land for single-family homes. Over $13 million in brownfield tax increment financing was approved, and bonds were issued by the city to support the project. Bruton Place, a single-family development in Lansing, that was another brownfield redevelopment site. This is also a brownfield TIF project that was approved through the city of Lansing. And Spring Haven Communities in Southfield is a former mobile home park. The owner had already sold and vacated the park when we came to develop the site. It was awarded $5 million in brownfield TIF for a single-family subdivision. They're attached single-family units here with commercial along Southfield Road. Shannon and I wanted to give you, oh, please.
Can I ask a question, a quick question?
Absolutely.
The, how the building, the orphanage, former orphanage, is that up near Marquette? I think it was?
Yeah.
Was that, and it said, I think, 56 units? So were those turned into 56 apartments? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, those were 56 apartments. And that was an affordable housing project, mixed income, primarily designated for workforce population and veterans, using MISHDA 9% tax credit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Another project that's not listed here is Fremont, that Shannon worked on, where she is also an owner of a low-income housing tax credit project. Get through these. So, we wanted to give you kind of an insight into how we look at housing development. So, we thought there was no better way than to kind of open the books, and show you what we're looking to develop, and talk a little bit about the costs that are associated. So, we've, we've broken down sources and uses in a, in a future slide. And just to kind of, to, you know, give you an example of the, the practices that we go through to evaluate a site. This is a very unique site. We can only say that it's in a strong market area, and the site is very unique. It is obvious, as you can see, it's very linear. So, development of this site, for any other purposes, would be very difficult. This is a very vocal and very active subdivision. So, trying to put high-density, you know, multifamily on this site would be very difficult. So, the municipality in question had a plan done that considered 14 very small, single-family structures, about 880 square feet in size. The site itself is only an acre and a third. So, at this point, we are looking at ways to finance this housing development, and we've come up with the following ideas and concepts for modular homes. We just kind of wanted to walk you through some of the different options. Shannon, do you want to jump in here and talk a little bit about modular?
Absolutely. So, on a, on a federal perspective, we're really starting to look at the opportunity to work with architects to get into design components for modular. Modular, in the past, has really had a bad reputation, because they haven't significantly paid attention to design. But specifically, are built the same way as a stick-built, the only difference is they're built in a factory. And that gives us some opportunity for leverage. You know, number one, anyone in the construction industry will tell you, one of our big challenges with Michigan, and, and, and we, Jill and I, through the Urban Land Institute, belong to the Housing Product Council. So, we often share best practices, and what current costs are in evaluation. It allows us to leverage national spending power for materials. Two, you know, it allows us to build the forms in a factory, so it cuts down on labor force and, and, and the active market play. And, and right now, just, just to give you an idea, when we compare Michigan with Ohio, they're saying, you know, we're getting information that our costs, the cost barriers to construction, that we're at least 20 to 30% higher. And part of that is, during the crash, we lost fundamentally a lot of our trades. And, and while construction still is going very strong here, it is everywhere else. We never got the trade base back at the levels that they were. So, we're, you know, and, and we've seen increasing cost to lumber, as well as other materials. That really is creating an impact for all municipalities that we talked to, and, and barriers for how we build homes. So, you know, these are just a couple of models that we're looking at, with Champion, who is one of the largest modular factories in the country. Their closest location is in Indiana. And we're working, as we said, we bring in our own architects to really design, but one of the things that we're working on is the product you see in the middle is actually a Lego house that they're designing in Pittsburgh. And this allows us to build, you know, high-density housing that we can stack up to three floors on, on modular panels. So, this is, this is a design, you know, that works in the right communities and right areas that want to see, see density. We're working on walk-up townhomes. And, and basically, what we're able to do is, we're working with municipalities to help design, help craft our final pro forma, and, and help actually craft what they need in, in certain communities, whether it's small footprint cottage-style homes, to the higher-density homes you see in the middle, or attached row or townhome products. We kept it really high level, just to give you some ideas, where we can dig in in talking about pro forma. As we told Joe, we're always happy to come back and go through the actual line items, when we talk about cost barriers. You know, the one thing that we're designing, and where most municipals are reaching out to us, is that, you know, they, we're trying to design more for workforce housing. We're trying to set aside units that are available with down payment assistance, and that, and have certain percentages of affordability. So, this is something different to every city, and can be customized. And you're going to see some of this in, in the sources. Obviously, with each site that we look at, and something you need to know when you're working with other developers, is there site constraints? What's the topo? You know, is there existing structures that need to be demolished? Do we have to get a tree survey? What is the existing infrastructure? So, I mean, a lot of that is in site work and hauling, if there's remediation work, especially in urban course. So, you'll see that we've got a lot of that lumped into infrastructure. Hard costs, certainly, barriers to design. What type of product are you using? What's the requirements for your exteriors? What's your window placement? How high-density can we get in to yield, you know, certain amount of units? Those are all things that impact, obviously, the final budget. And as we said, as we get into this, we can really break out each one of these costs. Basically, the way that we've got this out, we've got construction loaner equity, which would obviously be a source coming in. We're working with the state land bank on a couple of ideas that use TIF as a, as a source to create a gap or the incentive. Home, home is a source where we use when available, when a municipality has access to it through entitlement, or their local county or state resources. Home can be used in areas where, where it meets national requirements. But certainly, home is set aside for affordability, for, for folks that are making under, under 80% area median income. Obviously, hardcore, hard costs define all your line items, and the actual cost to construct. And soft costs are in your development. This is going to be your impact fees, your entitlement fees, permitting, legal costs, architectural costs, engineering costs, because even in single-family, there's all of these line items. And what we're doing, when we're designing with municipalities, is we're building this very complex puzzle, where we're actually going into joint ventures with cities. And it's all developer fee-based, so there's no profit level in there. It's developer fee-based, just as it would be in any other type of tax credit or other program, where we're looking at sites that we can design missing-middle product housing, and put in different levels of affordability. This seems to be a high priority, and it's, you know, these type of projects look different in every city. You know, certain cities have specific demographics, whether it be seniors, whether it be emerging workforce, whether it be high-density accessory dwelling units. All of this can really be crafted and designed to meet local community needs. Jill, I'll let you jump in, and kind of walk through the revenue and, and other sources.
Yeah, I think you did a great job of kind of setting the stage. The, the reason that there's no amount in the acquisition line item, is that under this scenario, we are acting on behalf of the municipality. So, we are not buying this property from the municipality. We are developing it, managing the construction, and then all the sales proceeds in this scenario will go back to the municipality. So, our fee is based on, you know, time and effort for the project, and it's typically about, in a project like this, it really depends on the funding sources, but about 10%, of, 10 to 15% of the hard and soft costs, what together. The hard costs, as Shannon said, it's really just the cost per unit for 14 units. And soft costs, in this particular scenario, and I want to go back to the site, because what, you know, as Shannon said, soft costs are extremely variable, depending on site constraints and conditions. And in this particular situation, we have a very linear site with no infrastructure through the site. So, all the infrastructure has to be put in, and there are no utility taps at, that would be the west side of the property to the right. And so, we have a lot of engineering and civil, really, civil engineering concerns for the site that have to be worked through. So, our soft costs on a site like this might be higher than a, you know, square piece of property without the same constraints. On the revenue side, in this market, we were anticipating 160,000 per unit. And then we were anticipating down payment assistance to come in through the MISHDA program for total revenue. And then we've got to pay back our equity source that paid for the construction, and that leaves the municipality with approximately $455,000. So, there's pieces of this that are variable, but we really wanted you to see, you know, where our fee comes from in a situation like this, how it's calculated, and where the costs are variable. And that's really the last slide that we have, so we can stop there, you know, right on the numbers, and open it up for questions, Jill, if that's okay with you.
Yes, I, I think, I think, I don't know if the council has questions, but that is a lot of information to, so. I feel like Steve always.
Does anyone have questions?
I do always have questions, but I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here furiously trying to move backwards through the presentation.
Oh, just tell me where you want to go. I'll drive.
So, go ahead, go ahead.
I guess to, to start off, and I don't know if this would be Jill or Shannon, but, so you guys, for this example site, you didn't pay anything for the land, and the, the, the units are 880 square feet, is that correct?
Correct.
And so, an 880-square-foot house, after all of the incentive that you got, the minimum you can really sell it for is $160,000.
In this market? That would change depending on location, yeah.
Okay. And, and can you explain that a little bit? Like, is, would you say 880 square feet for $160,000, is that, is that high typically, or is, like?
It, it, it's always market-driven. You, you know, if you're in areas that yield high gentrification, and it's, it's in a downtown of an area that has market rate, you can see it higher than that. This particular site was driven completely by the municipal, including acquisition. And those are all the puzzle pieces that municipals can drive. They wanted to see a smaller footprint housing, more in the missing-middle type, typography. They want to, also, they wanted to see different area median incomes. So, while that sale price is 160, we can target income populations as low as 50 or 60% area median income. And what would happen is, we would have larger down payment assistance. We would not, we would want to make sure we're keeping market values in neighborhoods, but, but how we bring in affordability is through that down payment assistance, either coming in through sources where, where they're available, through home, or through MISHDA down payment, or through working through the Federal Home Loan Bank programs. So, so yes, in this particular neighborhood, they're starting to see a lot of gentrification. They're starting to see home prices rise. They wanted to provide more housing to folks that needed to come in. This is a walkable community. This is just an adjacent suburb, you know, to a highly-dense, walkable community. So, these are all of the pieces that really work with the demographics that are impacting this community, and, and to the product. They don't have small housing product available. So, these were all kind of, these, all of these elements were driven through the municipals, based on needs and studies that they did. As Jill said, too, the type, the, the land is very difficult. So, because it is kind of sandwiched in between an existing, very vocal, community, this was a footprint in-house plan that worked, that was very acceptable to them, and worked in the dynamic that we could get everyone to agree with. And, and some of the costs that you see here, as Jill said, is because we have some main work on infrastructure to tap into the main. So, there was other investments that make it very worthwhile, that fits into the broader master plan for that community as well.
The other thing I would add is that this is an area that will require continued community engagement. And Shannon and I are, you know, very used to building that process into our development activities. It's something that we feel very strongly about. So, we will continue engagement with the single-family homeowners around this site for, for several months.
Now, Jill or Shannon, would you all consider this, I think you said it was 165,000, based on market-driven costs, would you consider this affordable housing? Not affordable, but affordable?
In this particular community, this is actually very affordable. This is a community that's seeing well over 250 a square foot for housing, and even higher. So, so we're talking, you know, and, and as we said, community-driven, there is not access here to any type of housing. And we're seeing an upward trajectory in housing, right? Because there's a dynamic shift. We can no longer produce housing, and this is a national crisis that's being addressed as we speak. We, we cannot produce housing because of cost barriers that are continuing to skyrocket. So, we're not seeing seniors move, we're not seeing, we, we're not seeing the normal fluid marketplace happen, which is causing pressure. And, you know, see, that is really what's putting the pressure on the existing housing market. The lack of affordable housing, as we start to see disinvestment in neighborhoods. So, yes, and as we said, remember, the final sale price does not, that does not include down payment assistance. The down payment assistance really will be quantified. will be quantified based on the area median income. And, and that's based on tools. If we have a municipal that we have access to those pots of funds, we can provide 40, 50,000 if we want to do, you know, a couple of units set aside for deep income targeting. It all just base, it's based on the type of tools that we have access to, the sites that we're working on, so they meet those national objectives. Say if we're meeting a home allocation or down payment assistance. And hopefully I, I didn't give too much information there. But, but that gives you an idea that, you, you know, that person might buy the house for 160,000. They might be someone at 65% area median income, you know, working at the local restaurant per se, or an emergency service driver. They may actually get $30,000 in down payment assistance to meet their affordability for their debt to income ratios. So just something to keep in mind. Those are tools that, that could be used.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Shannon, for the, for the presentation. How, how long does a roof on a modular home last?
So it's, it's the same roof and same material you're going to put on a frame, a wood frame stick built. We, we still have all the same building code. It's still all the same trades. The only difference, you, you know, we, we always think modular, these terrible mobile homes. Modular is different. Same thing. The materials have to be building code. It has to be warranted. And the factories have access to all the same materials that residential home builders have, meet. You know, ultimately, we want to make sure that they're very energy efficient. We're going to look for green standards, and those materials can be built out of, out of their national spending capabilities with their suppliers.
Okay. Well, help me out, because I, I can't lie. I'm a little lost. This is not my field of expertise. But when, when we're thinking about remediation as a term, right, we're talking about a list of items to fix an environment, right? Like, so when we think about Water Street, when you're talking about 1.3 acres, does it cost that much to remediate that project that you did? And speaking of Water Street, what list, is it talking about space-time toxicity? What do we need to do to remediate Water Street? And based on that size, and does it determine what, what you, so when you, all the things that you just told us, so that's the what you do? Or the how you do? And so I understand, as I'm getting the ideal of how things are paid for, some of the different money structures, but I'm saying as far as Water Street, what type of remediation that you've been doing on some of those projects that you can lend to these projects?
So that might be a good segue, Joe, into Nathan's presentation. I, I will say that, Mr. Morgan, what we're trying to show you here is a way to creatively use some of the same tools that you'd use to remediate a street, a site like Water Street, which Shannon and I have both looked at in the past as a potential development site. So we're familiar with the contamination there, or even the Northfield psychiatric site that I worked on. It's just a way to use some of those same tools to get different results. You know, on some sites like Water Street, you're going to want to use that Brownfield TIF to pay for the cleanup, to make sure that you're at the right cleanup standards for the product that you want to push there, whether it's residential, commercial, whatever.
Okay.
This is a creative use of those same tools to create attainable housing. Not, you know, income restricted affordable housing like a Lytec deal, but workforce or attainable housing, which is kind of in that sandwich between 80 to 120% of area median income. Does that make sense?
You're telling us what to put there as opposed to how to, you're telling us a creative way to use some of the same tools to get the same outcome?
Exactly.
Ultimately, your, your baseline assessment, we'd have to do the same, you know, based on those conditions of what site cleanup is, it would, it would be the same parameters. But TIP also, if we, we are able to use TIP in housing, when we, when we use a land bank, which is a new tool that the state is just identifying and working with. So, so TIP in housing, as Jill said, to provide attainable housing is a new tool that communities are working with.
Jill, you mentioned a couple of times in your presentation and then in your answer to Councilmember Morgan, you, you mentioned workforce housing. How, what is that?
So workforce housing is not exactly a technical term under HUD guidance or statutory references. Workforce in our world is kind of that, that area below market, but not as low income as the 60% area median income range that tools like the low-income housing tax credit would produce, or even home, when you get into rental, that dips down into the 50% area median income range. So this is kind of that below-market area above deep compliance requirements in the 80% of area median income to about 120% area median income. And some of you who have been around for a while might remember the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. These are funds that came out, yeah, probably painfully, depending on how you participated in that program. It was very quick turnaround time, and it was part of a stimulus package, which is what we're about to experience next year, as more money comes down from the federal government. That funding source targeted that income range. So a lot of single-family homes were done, and some multifamily projects to really kind of fill that gap, because there's a lot of money flowing from the federal government for extremely low income and 60% area median income, but not that middle income area. I hope that answered your question.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it does. Because when I hear workforce, I'm thinking of workforce, the agency, so.
Oh, no.
I just needed some clarification. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, um, the only thing, and I think to kind of get to Councilor Morgan's question about the modular, and speaking with Shannon and Jill, can you, you, you kind of touched on it, but, but really the cost differential between stick build and modular, you said isn't that much. It's just more of the predictability that you guys can get out of the modular. So could you kind of explain that in a couple of quick minutes?
Absolutely. So first of all, you know, there is some cost overall savings, because we're using a national distributor that has a presence, and, and we can certainly get a better cost per square foot on product. But we're able to build these in the factory, which means we don't have your normal site conditions. We can order this in winter while we're doing infrastructure. And if you talk to anyone in construction, the barriers really is that management of the trades, getting framers on site, you know, digging basements. So there's an overall cost saving from the time element that you save in building these out in factories. This is something, you know, that several of the state agencies are exploring through housing models, whether it just be it building panel walls or these modulators that you see. But we're able to deliver these about 90% built. It's about getting cranes on site, delivering them, and coming in and finishing them off. So they're much more efficient in the way that they're built in the factory, and, and they're much more efficient in the delivery of the product.
Thank you for the presentation. This is all very interesting.
You're welcome.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, it's really been interesting. I'm still wrapping my mind around some of it. But very interesting, and I really enjoyed the presentation.
Well, I'm going to keep Shannon and Jill in my rolodex, and we're going to keep talking about other projects in Ipsy. And so I think Jill's going to stick around for Nathan's presentation, but I know Shannon has another obligation. So unless anyone else has any questions, Councilmember Jones, Chance, or Coxon, or Simmons?
I just wanted to thank you for the, the presentation. It kind of opens up the idea that there's lots of different ways to, to finance these things, and different options for, for our citizens to, to afford them. So I'll have to do my homework.
Yeah.
I just want to say thanks to both Jill and Shannon for your presentation. It was enlightening.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for coming.
We, we would love to come and do something in Ipsilanti. It'd be nice to work with all of you.
Please do. You have an open invitation. Come talk to us.
All right. Well, I know we have, now we have Nathan vote. We're, we're a couple of minutes behind. But Nathan, I believe you know some people on council, but I, you're the Brownfield Specialist. I, I don't know what your exact title is, but I work with Nathan on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. So I'm going to kick it over to him. Nathan, give a little bit of explanation on who you are and what makes you qualified to talk about brownfields?
Sure. Thanks, Joe. Mayor Council. So glad to be here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about brownfields. Well, I, I run the County Brownfield Authority, so I staff the nine-member authority and been doing this for about eight years. And we have a lot of, we're a very active program, a lot of active projects. And we've got a, a active grant loan programs up and running as well. And as Joe alluded to, I was the planner back in the city in 2001 to 2008. So a long history with this site and with the city, and happy to continue to be working on, you know, aspects of, of Water Street here, and hoping this, you know, this will take off. With that, I could probably share my screen. Everybody seeing that? Can everybody see that?
I can. I can see it. Yep.
Right. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about Brownfield redevelopment and how we, it's done in the state of Michigan and how our experience here in the county. And then talk a little bit about the Water Street Brownfield Plan that's already in place. The city of Ipsy was actually the first community in the county in 1998-ish to form an authority. Then the county realized a role that we could play forming a regional authority and then inviting communities to participate. So we formed ours in 99. The city joined our authority, and all that means is we work with local units around the county, 23. So most of the county is, is with us, and then we can work with you and developers and to bring about brownfield plans and, and redevelop brownfield sites. And we provide access to local, state, federal environmental grants and loans and that sort of thing. The city of Ipsy has been fairly active over the years with brownfield TIF projects and some grants. The school picture renovation of the former school on Forest was about eight or nine years ago. The Thompson, of course, finishing up now was a TIF project. The Mack and Mack Building was just a tax credit project. That's where Spark is. And of course, the Water Street Plan, that's 2015 and one before it, actually. And then we also provided a, a county local brownfield revolving fund grant for the Water Street Trail, the border-to-border segment that needed some remediation. And that was actually our first LBRF grant that we gave. We do have a nine-member authority board of experts and municipal representatives and members from the community at large. And we also have a liaison from the county board of commissioners, which is usually the, the chair. So it's Jason Morgan these days. And so just a couple of pictures from the, a couple of projects here that I, that I mentioned, school pictures. We use tax increment financing to help some asbestos and other costs for this developer. And then the grant funds that we provided directly to the city from our LBRF funding for the, the trail there. So I just wanted to kind of talk about incentives generally, but separate out grants and loans that, again, we can provide access. We've gotten loans for projects from the Clean Michigan Initiative through the state of Michigan. And we also have our own LBRF loan, loan and grant program, which is very well-funded at this point, so available for use. And then TIF, which TIF has been brought up and talked about, we'll literally, I'll talk about both of those things separately. But reiterate that these are voluntary incentives. You have, you are in the driver's seat as the municipality as to how you deploy these, how you use them to assist the developer in redeveloping the site. And we use, the whole purpose of Act 381, which is the brownfield statute that we operate under, is to make a project financially feasible. And so it's the but-for test. You should really have the, the developer demonstrate to you, but for this incentive that they're asking for, they could not make the project financially feasible. So that's an important thing to close the financial gap. It's got to be necessary, the incentive. And communities are now beginning to get a little more, a little more sophisticated and beginning to link these incentives with specific community goals, whether it's infrastructure improvements or affordable housing. And of course, the city of Ipsy has the CBO, and so you, you're kind of doing your own version of that through that. And again, the LBRF fund, I can't say enough about this. This is a very well-funded, and we're happy to support the city in the Water Street Trail remediation. We've supported Ann Arbor Housing Commission and the Leslie Science and Nature Center with grants and doing a lot of great work with that. And it's, it's available again for use. Grants for municipalities and nonprofits, but loans to private entities. So in terms of the TIF side of incentives, again, Act 381 set it up where communities can form brownfield authorities and adopt brownfield plans. And each of these plans is, is finite. It's for usually one site. And it's very specific and lays out the cost for eligible brownfield activities. And then the other piece of the success of this legislation was before 96, if you bought a contaminated piece of property, you were suddenly liable for it. And with this act, there was another piece that shifted the liability to causation-based. So if you wanted to come in and redevelop a site, you can file a baseline environmental assessment and no longer be strictly liable for what's there. You are required to exercise due care and make sure you don't exacerbate what's there. But suddenly, it opened up brownfield properties to more feasible redevelopment. And quickly, all over the country, other states followed the state of Michigan with very similar legislation. And TIF is, I wanted to explain that briefly. Many of you probably understand it. It's not a tax abatement. So TIF works by establishing a base, base taxable value at the time of brownfield plan adoption. And all of those taxes being paid at the time of plan adoption continue to be paid and paid to all the taxing jurisdictions. After the development occurs, the taxable value increases. And the taxes paid on that increase or increment is what is captured and utilized by the city of Ipsy, by the county authority, to reimburse the developer for costs related to the redevelopment. So it's, I always talk about it as a win-win, because we're not taking any existing tax revenue. We're using future revenue generated from the project to reimburse costs, to finance costs. The other thing I wanted to make sure that Joe and I talked about, wanting to make sure we cover, is in the state of Michigan, it's not a brownfield remediation program that, that we run, that the state of Michigan runs. It's a brownfield redevelopment program. So the focus is, how can we make sites that are challenged? How can we redevelop them in safe ways, but not necessarily spend needless money on just cleaning everything up to a pristine standard that's really hard to achieve? So it's really about managing the contamination, protecting public health, protecting the environment from worsening conditions, and, and maybe not pulling everything out of a site, managing what's there and, and any potential pathway to hurt the environment or to future occupants of the site, you, you take care of through due care, your exercise, due care. And, and so we have examples, even in the county right now, in Ann Arbor, I've got a couple here where there's quite a bit of, there, in 1140 Broadway, the Lower Town Project, which is now under development, large plume of dry cleaning solvent. We did, with the state of Michigan, get a big grant to help inject some organic matter down into the plume to lower the concentration of it, but we didn't get rid of it. It's still there, but it's much lower concentrations. And so that's sort of managing what's there, not removing it all. And then the other example I, I cite is the DTE site on the Huron River, right next to this other site in Lower Town. A lot of byproduct from the manufactured gas operations over 100 years was just buried on site. So what's happening there is you've got the DTE being the responsible, the liable party. They continue to have obligations to manage what's there. The development will essentially go in on top of it, kind of through it, but not endangering anybody. It stays in place. It's encapsulated and managed. And so I want to make that distinction, because there has been a lot of remediation in Water Street. Many, many large chunks of hotspots were cleaned up. Twenty, we got 20 feet of clean. Many, many large chunks of hotspots were cleaned up. Twenty, we got twenty feet of clean, of, of fill sand in there. But there's still areas that are concerning and those might be removed if they're in the way of like a foundation or a road, a road base, but they may stay and be managed. And these are the two Ann Arbor projects where like I, I, that I use as examples. This Lower Town Project, thirteen million in brownfield costs, a six-acre property. The DTE site, uh, seventeen million, up to seventeen million in costs, uh, fourteen acres. So talking a little bit about the brownfield plan that we've, uh, the city already adopted for Water Street, uh, adopted in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, up to a, about eighteen point five million in possible developer reimbursable, uh, eligible activities. And really look at this plan that, that was adopted five years ago as a, you know, potential menu of costs that might be incurred that could help support redevelopment of the site. These are not exact costs. This is our best projection or best guess based on the data we knew at that time. And so we've got five million in environmental, that's due care, that's actual soil remediation, that could be investigation. And then we've got ten million in non-environmental activities, which could be, uh, infrastructure upgrades, could be streetscape work. It could be even be parking decks. It could be, uh, rain gardens. So lots of non-environmental that could be incentivized at your discretion, the city's discretion, to help support redevelopment of the site. And then another eligible activities is, is interest. Many developers have the extra cost of financing these extra expensive brownfield activities. So the city at your discretion could allow interest to be generated and reimbursed on, on unreimbursed brownfield costs to help the developer carry those costs forward. So after the brownfield plans in place, which sort of commits the local millages to reimbursement, the next step would be for, uh, the, the city, county and future developer to have a specific work plan. It was called an Act three eighty-plan, three eighty-one work plan. And this is the document that has the detailed approach, the detailed costs that have been negotiated between the city and the developer. And the detailed approach for how the developer is going to exercise due care and going to demonstrate that they're complying with all remediation regulations, environmental regulations that they have to deal with. And so that's a very detailed document. You'll, everybody will see it. It will be approved by, um, Eagle, which is the Department of Great Lakes and Energy and, uh, the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation to, and that secures the school tax capture piece of this, which is, uh, twenty-four mils, but they keep three mils of the SET. So what it would bring to bear twenty-one mils of additional potential reimbursement and capture, uh, on the site. So the, those two pieces are important. The local brownfield plans in place, the Act three eighty-one work plan is, that would be the next step. And then finally, the developer presumably, uh, would incur the eligible costs, which again are detailed in that work plan. They would, uh, the costs will be submitted and reviewed, uh, by the, the authority. The city would be able to review those, make sure they're legitimate. And then the developers only reimbursed for actual expenses that have been reviewed and, and approved. And there's a reimbursement agreement that would be between the county authority and the developer. And basically depending on the taxable value and the rate of build-out and the total expenses, uh, actual expenses to be reimbursed, that's how many years it takes to fully pay off the plan. And once that, that's done, the brownfield plan expires, all the taxing jurisdictions then realize that increase in ta, in taxes that was being captured. And then the, it's done. Yeah. Um, the maximum captures thirty years, uh, very, very rare. If ever has that, by, have we ever approved a plan that would go thirty years? You, it's not ideal. Obviously you want something, the average is usually five, ten, fifteen years. We tend to see, it all depends on the individual factors of the site though. That's all I had for you tonight. I tried to keep it short and sweet and basic. And there probably be, will be more opportunity in the future as, uh, conversations with your current developer or other developers get more serious. Uh, I'm always available to talk more about this stuff.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you, Nathan, and it's good to see you.
You too, Mayor.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Nathan. Does anyone have any questions for Nathan?
Uh, yeah, I've got one. Yeah, so Nathan, seeing as you know the project so well, um, are there any things that, um, you think that we should be looking out for? I know one that has stuck out for me. And I keep pestering Joe about it. His, um, just sort of the, the pro forma financials from the developer on this project. So we at least have some sort of like a rough idea. You know, given the, the proposed scope of the project and what you know about the cleanup, other, are there any potential pitfalls for the city that we should be, uh, on guard for?
What we always advise, um, communities that we work with, and Ann Arbor really started doing this from the very beginning. They, they started doing a very rigorous pro forma analysis. They had the staff to do that. They had a, a person that was super familiar with commercial real estate. And so they didn't have to farm it out or anything. And that speaks to the but-for argument. The, the potential pitfall is the city is so anxious to get this developed that they don't really scrutinize sufficiently the developers' pro forma, or maybe they believe the pro forma is submitted. And what you don't want to be is re, you don't want to be reimbursing millions of dollars that weren't necessary to make the project carry out. So that, that's where I would really advise you to get the pro forma. If you need to hire an outside, you know, farm it out to somebody that needs to review it, you could have the expertise in-house. I can't speak to that, but have it scrutinized, have it reviewed. Make sure that they demonstrate adequately that they really, really need what they're asking for.
Okay. Yeah, I think that kind of lines up with my thinking and, um, that's all for me. And, uh, tell your mom I said happy birthday. I missed it.
I will.
So Nathan, just to, a quick question. Because we're not at the point of knowing what the exact costs are, it, is it like, how, how would you create a pro forma without knowing what the today costs, uh, to remediate are?
Well, it wouldn't be done now. I think you need to get to a point where, um, you, you should probably tell the developer what to expect.
Yeah.
I'll tell them exactly what you'll be asking for when the time comes. And that you'll be seeking that they demonstrate they're not getting an excessive return on their investment from the site. But that can't come until later, right? You, you have to have a site that's essentially final draft, you know, not just preliminary or concept. They need to have an, an idea of the layout. The city sort of endorsed in somewhere or, or another, the layout of the site, you know, the density, you know, the square footage of the buildings. And then they can start to generate the actual brownfield costs. They have to have their consultant come in and say, okay, based on the layout and based on where we, what we know of the site, where the hotspots are, we're gonna have to do X, Y, and Z. Here's the costs. Here's a proposed work plan city. I think when they get to the point where they know those costs, the layout's basically done. And they can build you a pro forma that's pretty accurate. At that point, you can, that's where the rubber hits the road and that's where you can review it. But now's not the time. It's right. It's way too early for that.
Thank you, Nathan. Does anyone else have any questions for Nathan? Well, we have him. I know the work session went till seven, but we still have him here.
It is seven. I just wanted to ask a small question. I just wanted to ask, um, Nate, when it comes to do care, um, where it says managing what's on site as opposed to getting rid of it. Um, are there a certain, when something is being managed as opposed to being removed, is there a certain list where associated actions and behavior could accelerate that? Or by not doing so could leave the, what's intact longer?
Yeah, so an assessment would be made, uh, in terms of what the material is. We're talking about how dangerous it is. What, what kind of pathways would it seek? And then where it's located, how deep it is. And then they, you know, they would work with their consultant to say, okay, this is kind of near the surface. Do care for this contaminant would mean we're gonna put two, two or four feet of clean soil on top of this. So there's no chance of anybody wandering around the site, coming into direct contact with that contaminant, for example. The whole host of assessing what you're dealing with, where it's located, will it move, will it rise? There's a whole area of vapor intrusion, which is an emerging thing that there's a lot of vapor, do vapor mitigation, do care, uh, activities that you'll, that you'll see on most sites nowadays. Because they have to make sure those vapors don't travel laterally, get into some foundation and get up into a building, for example. So that's care. So it's, it's very, it's a very complicated assessment of sort of lots of different factors.
And you can have, based on what's there, you can have a multiple different types of do care on one site.
Absolutely. You've got direct contact concerns. You've got vapor concerns. Um, you've got, uh, how, how contaminant interfaces with surface water. So the, the Huron River is there. So if there's something that's kind of moving to the Huron River, they might have to look at that in a, in a different way as well.
Thank you. I have another question.
So Nathan, uh, with do care, and I asked this knowing that you know, you know, some, uh, history about Water Street and what's there. Uh, the contaminants that are there. Uh, would do care provide that it would be buildable and livable? Rather than the complete remediation, uh, as?
Yeah. Right, Mayor. I think what I'm suggesting or what I'm saying is that do the process that to make sure that what's left, if you leave anything, and what I'm saying is often, you, you don't have to spend a lot of money removing stuff that no one's ever gonna come into contact with. Do care is the process of assessing that. And making sure that whatever is there or is left is never gonna pose a threat.
Okay. So do care kind of follows the remediation?
It's part of the whole process. Is gonna have that plan. We're gonna have that work plan. We're gonna know exactly what they intend to do. The state of Michigan signs off on it. They've got experts that review these things, uh, they sign off on it. And we know exactly what they're gonna do as they redevelop the site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, could you remind me what is? What is the requirement from MISTHA as far as, uh, remediation removal or, uh, management?
Yeah, so, uh, it, it's kind of unclear because there's always the chicken or egg there, but from what they had indicated, it must be cleaned up to residential standards. And the do care to residential standards in order for an affordable housing development to be built there.
So it just has to be brought down to some acceptable level that they define?
That, well, that's defined by the, by Eagle, uh, at the state as being, or, or is it, uh, or is it the, uh, EPA, Nathan, who says this?
Well, so that's a great question because of course we had a project several years ago that MISTHA sort of squashed. Is that the right word? Yeah. And the, the issue that we were having, we were working with AKT at the time, they were representing the city back then as well. The issue we had was it wasn't clear what standards they were using. They seemed to be applying some arbitrary standard at times, in, in our opinion, AKT's opinion, and, um, and not Eagles. So that I'm going on memory here, uh, and I, I'm not trying to malign MISTHA, that they have, you know, but they have a separate environmental sort of review department from Eagle. So I can't tell you what those standards are. I think that would be, we, we would need to get back in touch with them and reconnect on that sort of issue.
Yeah, but our, our issue is just that the same person who had the issue is still the environmental review person at MISTHA. And so.
Okay, well.
But.
Uh, so the, the sheriff's bet then would probably be removal. I would imagine, um, which kind of dovetails into some of the things that Renovare was saying. Um, it's gonna determine what kind of programs are available for, you know, small A affordability.
It definitely hampers, uh, uh, because of the contamination on the site. It, it eliminates some of the tools that Renovare has. Uh, and so that's why, you know, the, the Water Street site is more geared towards cleaning up the contamination and, and making sure the do care is, is done properly. And then that's why we have other sites where we can work with Renovare, um, for different things. So.
Joe, I think Councilmember, uh, Wilcoxen had his hand up.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Sorry. Um, so looking at the, the, the different environmental standards, you know, talking about, you know, Eagle has one site, MISTHA has another, or they will interpret those as, as they see fit. Um, and doing the affordable housing versus doing some of the things that, um, previous consultants were talking about in terms of like down payment assistance and things like that. So, um, would those programs like the down payment assistance require the same level of cleanup, um, that, um, the, you know, uh, official affordable housing projects would require? Cause I know that you, you'd said at some point that that was, that was the maximum amount of cleanup that you would need. Um, and I'm just wondering if, if, you know, how, how those things, how flexible are those?
So when it comes to MISTHA down payment assistance, that is a separate program. Uh, whereas the, the development that we've tried to, to, to work on, it was the Herman and Kittle project that, that Nathan spoke of. And that one was using, uh, nine percent li-tex. So it was a complete, it was like a affordable, uh, uh, AMI-based housing development. And so, um, those wouldn't be eligible. As far as the down payment assistance, uh, I think that's a separate thing. And I don't know if Jill has any, any take on how that's calculated, although I don't know if you want to get into how MISTHA calculates certain things like that.
Well, what I can say, and I, I'm curious to know, Nathan, you know, the last time you've seen, um, a nine percent project be evaluated in, in Washtenaw, um, we just went through a nine percent process in Detroit and worked very closely with the environmental team. And I would say that their ability to, um, manage the environmental process and, and allow you to use two oh, part two oh one is the state statute that drives the cleanup criteria for Michigan. And authority to, um, uh, you know, uh, manage environmental, um, situations in the state of Michigan has been delegated to the state from, from the EPA, um, in some, in some matters. So, um, I have seen MISTHA evolve over time and their environmental team really start to be able to, um, be flexible on do care. Um, we have a four percent li-tex right now in Pontiac that we are working on. That is a former, um, Sears site with twelve former underground storage tanks. And we are working through that environmental, environmental process with them. So it may be time to revisit that staff, Nate, and, and talk to them about their current, um, view of, of do care and how, what they're willing to accept. But I will definitely echo Nathan's, um, comments about vapor. Soil vapor has become a hu, very huge issue in the state of Michigan. And it's very difficult to get a, your arms around what your do care is until you have your building footprints really identified. So you know whether you're gonna hit hotspots on the site. So that do care almost follows through the site planning process. And you really can't finalize it until you know where you're gonna build and what you're gonna build.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe. All right, I'm not seeing anyone else. Well, I would like to personally thank Nathan and Jill and and Shannon uh for coming and giving counsel. Uh Development 101 and Brownfield 101, uh trust me, the grad level courses are coming soon. Uh because there's a lot to do, I see Steve super excited, no one else, uh not as much. Uh but um so thank you both, um and I hope this was useful for council. Uh and if, please let me know, uh you know, I you know, after this, if if things like this would be helpful in the future.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank Nathan and Jill and Shannon for the presentation tonight. And a special thanks to Joe for putting all this together, and I hope it answered some questions for. That were floating around amongst council members, I know it answered some questions for me. But again, thank you and a very um Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to Jill and to uh Nathan. And um a Happy New Year.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Nathan, again, it's good to see you, it's been a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Halanga, we can go along, go along, um go on with the agenda.
Sure, uh council, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Um if any members of the public would like to make comment, please raise their hand, you'll have three minutes to address council. Uh we have one individual with their hand raised. Uh Desiree Simmons, I'll allow them to speak now. To unmute yourself in order to.
Hello, everyone, good to see you all, uh I really, I just wanna say thanks for that too, with those things. About the council, I appreciate the education too, and just kind of understanding some different things. So I have a couple of different thoughts, I'm just gonna gonna all connected, but um. One thing I just wanted to update, I wanted to say is that the conversation around workforce housing. Uh and attainable housing, this is the first time I heard attainable housing, so that's interesting, I will look into that some more, but. Workforce um is thinking about what kind of, what does that mean, like what is Ipsilani workforce actually? Um and to really look at the data and about that, um and to recognize that we. We are, you know, people talk about like how much affordable housing we have in Ipsy, but recognizing we are the affordable housing for Ann Arbor. And so um to recognize what workforce do we have in Ipsilani and how that might be different from Ann Arbor. Um the other thing is I thought was really interesting when they were talking about the different tools and the importance of. Um the area median income, to me, this really highlights the uh I'm and how that also opens up these different possibilities. For assistance, um in terms of some of that down payment assistance and different things. That to me really um lifts up how important it is for us to really look at. Uh the local Ipsilani numbers around our area median income. Um and to recognize that we can't ignore the real picture that's in front of us in terms of. What, you know, where our community stands in terms of income and where the rest of the county stands. And that there's ways, there's tools that we can put in place that might actually open up possibilities uh for developers. Because of being able to look at what does eighty to a hundred percent AMI look like for Ipsilani? And that that actually might give us a better range. Um I also wanted to just say, let's see here, um I thought it was interesting, this conversation about do care. I appreciate a lot of questions around that, and recognize that we've been talking so much about what it would cost to fully remediate the site, and I actually take it as encouragement. That uh or um that there might be um given from the previous work that there might be. We might not be as bad off as we thought with that, um with thinking about what the site might look like. Um because containment and management might not cost as much as we thought it would, so I appreciated that. Um I think the other thing to lift up is just uh when thinking about future revenue. Um that that, you know, that gives a natural incentive to drive costs up. Um the market must always go up, that is just the rule of a capitalist market. Um and, you know, we always are then either readjusting to a new norm and thinking about the good old days and who's not here anymore. And I just say, like they, a couple of times, people kept saying things about council's discretion. And so just really ask, what else besides the market can we consider? Because so many things are set up by a market and those things um. Will necessarily uh change future, the future, so thank you.
The next individual with their hand raised is Bob Kay, allow them to speak now.
Okay, I'm unmuted now, thanks. And uh you're Bob Corwin, seven oh six Dwight Street, and on behalf of the Non-Motorized Advisory Committee. Just like to commend uh Public Services uh for including a non-motorized element to the reconstruction of the Forest Avenue Bridge. And also Huron River Drive, it'll add greatly, I think, to uh being able to get around, walking or biking in the in the area. And especially with the surge we've seen due to the pandemic here too of uh untold nu- numbers of. People out biking and walking, so again, thanks uh to the Public Services Department for the in keeping in mind the non-motorized element.
Thank you so much, Bob.
Okay, council, that was the last individual um with their hand raised. Um if anyone else would like to make comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed to make uh to speak. All right, seeing none, um going on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. Go ahead and read that now. Resolution number twenty twenty dash two six five, resolved by the Council of the City of Ipsilani. That the following items be approved, resolution number twenty twenty dash two six six, approving the minutes of November twenty fourth. December first and December eighth, twenty twenty. Resolution number twenty twenty dash two six seven, approving appointments to boards and commissions. Resolution number twenty twenty dash two six eight, amending resolution twenty twenty dash one three four. To add the city manager as the authorized representative of the EDA grant for the Ann Arbor Ipsilani Fiber and Conduit Network backbone. I'll call the roll, Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson? Mayor Richardson?
Sorry, I said yes, I didn't realize I was still muted, sorry.
No problem, Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the. Next item. Resolution number twenty twenty dash two six nine, resolved by the Council of the City of Ipsilani. Whereas the YFD was awarded the fiscal twenty nineteen assistance to firefighters grant. AFG to include the installation of a direct source capture exhaust system. The amount of the grant awarded was sixty nine thousand nine hundred and forty three dollars and sixty four cent. The YFD's ten percent share is six thousand nine hundred ninety four dollars and thirty six cents. And whereas Clean Air Concepts provided the lowest bid at fifty seven thousand two hundred and seven dollars. And whereas YFD is requesting approval to award the bid to Clea- Clean Air Concepts. To start the process of replacing the vehicle exhaust system on the YFD's apparatus floor. And whereas this new exhaust capture system will essentially eliminate a hundred percent of the diesel and automotive exhaust gases. Currently emitted presenting danger to fire personnel and the community. And whereas Clean Air Concepts will provide the associated labor, materials and equipment needed to complete the exhaust capture system. Including but not limited to all things related to removing diesel. And automotive exhaust gases within the confines of the Ipsilani Fire Station. And whereas the entire project will include the purchase, delivery, installation of the direct source capture exhaust system. And complete repair to the existing manual ventilation system. Per the AFG, the funds will cover all associated permit fees, all electrical modifications. A five-year warranty for parts and labor, basic systems training, and any modifications that must be made to the current exhaust system on the apparatus. Remaining funds will be used to repair the existing manual ventilation system. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ipsilani City Council approves awarding the bid to Clean Air Concepts. To start the process of replacing the vehicle exhaust system on the YFD's apparatus floor. I'll move.
Good evening, Chief, how are you, sir?
Good evening, good, how about yourself?
I'm well, thank you. You're muted, man.
All right, do you want to say anything to us about the uh about this resolution, about the truck, about the cleanup?
Uh projects are going good at the fire station, this is a, this uh one piece of of a puzzle. And uh I said our system, uh it's uh it's uh was put in like ten fifteen years ago. It's antiquated, it's outdated, you can't get parts for it, it it doesn't meet standards, this is gonna meet current EPA standards. That's the last part of this, if uh is the, if the EPA wants us to uh to do a survey on the site, that's the last thing that would hold that up. After that part of it's finished, uh then uh, you know, they don't even need that, but I'm still waiting to hear back from them, if they do, we'll have to do that. And if that, that would be the last part of this, but everything else is in place.
Right, thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I think it's pretty good for for me.
Thank you.
It's usually pretty like straightforward when it comes to like your items, so.
I try to keep it that way.
Yep.
All right, appreciate it.
All right, anyone else, if not, um Clerk of Lingo, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, and thanks.
Merry Christmas.
Talking to us, Chief Hobbs. Yes, and please convey our warmest holiday greetings to the uh to your staff. Also, um I hope you receive the invitation that went out today for the all-staff party.
Yes, I did, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, please.
It's virtual for anybody listening.
Please encourage your um your staff to join us, thank you.
Do that, yes, I will.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Clerk of Lingo.
Council, moving on to the next item, uh twenty twenty two seven zero. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ipsilani, whereas the City of Ipsilani have been allocated funds by the Michigan Department of Transportation. To perform rehabilitation work on the Forest Street Bridge. And whereas the city engineer, OHM, has prepared, prepared a proposal to provide design engineering services for the project. And whereas design engineering is necessary to begin the project in the twenty twenty two construction season. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Ipsilani approves a proposal for from OHM. For design engineering services for an amount of seventy nine thousand five hundred dollars. That the city clerk is authorized to sign this proposal, and any change orders may be approved by the city manager to facilitate the completion of this work.
Is there a motion? Okay, so we got moves and we have support.
I owe you a Coke.
Okay, um Mr. Akers, I see you, um let us see your face, so I'm assuming you have a. Uh presentation or some words for us.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
So the City of Ipsilani was awarded an M.DOT Local Bridge Program Grant of approximately one point one two million dollars, which we're very excited about. Um to do, perform rehab work on the Forest Street Bridge. Uh in order to start this rehab work, OHM has put together a proposal to provide design engineering services for this project. Uh the scope of work for the proposal includes uh more thorough inspection of the bridge. Survey work, plan preparation, permitting, utility corp- coordination, excuse me, and traffic plan maintenance. Uh the total cost of the design engineering proposal is seventy nine thousand five hundred dollars. So for this project, we are tentatively planning on it to begin in the spring, summer of twenty twenty two. And we're targeting the January twenty twenty two letting through M.DOT, so that's when we're hoping to have bids back through the M.DOT uh bidding process. So as part of the local bridge grant, uh the grant is gonna cover ninety percent of the construction costs of this project. Um and the city will be required to cover the other ten percent of the construction costs, and we will be required to cover all the engineering costs for the project. Um these costs will be covered out of the city's Act fifty one major street account. Uh essentially, this concludes my summary of the agenda item, and I'll be happy to, and I will be happy to answer any questions. Uh Rachel Jackson from OHM is here as well, and uh she can answer any questions as well, so thank you.
All right, thank you, now the portion that belongs to the city, do we have enough? In the Act fifty one funds to cover that portion?
Yes, yes, we we get about uh, based on the way our budget works now with our Act fifty one, we have about a half million dollars a year that we can. Invest towards either engineering or capital, and based on our projections, we should be good.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? For Mr. Akers or from, did you say, oh, there she is, how are you this evening?
Hi, Mayor, I'm good, how are you? Hi, Council.
Thank you.
And city staff.
Yes, so do you want to just share something with us, or just you want to answer questions?
Oh, I'm I'm just here to answer questions, but I will say I'm very excited, um we have submitted for the Forest to for Forest Street Bridge to be funded. The last couple of years, and it was so close last year, so I'm just really pleased that it finally got the funding this year, so I'm happy for you guys.
Thank you, we've needed it for a long time, and you know.
They recognize that now too, so that's good, that's good.
Yeah, thank you, all right, any questions or comments from the rest of council? Yes, Ms. Brian Jones Chance?
Uh yeah, um about how much of the annual allocation do we use each year?
We do use most of it each year, uh it it varies from year to year. And the next agenda, we're gonna talk about a very large road construction project, so we're actually, over the next couple of years. Phasing back what we use um in order to, you know, build up fund balance to cover the potential cost of that project. But but generally, we we spend it each year.
And then, so since we use most of it. Um are the projects, I'm assuming the projects that would kind of. Uh fall by the wayside because we're doing this larger one, are those mostly minor?
Well, we are, we are still doing project, I I don't want to say that we're not, we're not doing any projects, we are, we are still doing projects. Essentially, um you have two types of road projects that that we typically use some of these funds for. You have uh reconstruction projects, which is, um you know, you're rebuilding the full road, and then you do. You have rehabilitation projects where you're doing, they call it milling overlay, you just, essentially, they grind off the top inch, two inches of asphalt and. Lay down a new layer. Um you, we typically look at the crack patterns in the roads to figure out which uh which remedy is appropriate. Um but, you know, our goal over the next couple of years, and and one of the things that. We've been working on with our capital improvement plan is making sure that we're maximizing our road dollars, as it were. So one of the things that, you know, when we do put our capital improvement plan before council this year, you're gonna see is that that. Over the next six years, we have a plan to maximize our allocation of road dollars, so that way we're. So one of the things that, you know, when we do put our capital improvement plan before council this year, you're going to see is that, that over the next six years, we have a plan to maximize our allocation of road dollars, so that way we're investing everything we can into the roads that we're able to. So I guess that's a long answer to your question, but we're, we are looking at that.
Okay, and then.
If I could add to that, Brian, we, we normally bring our major road projects to council too, to prioritize. So sometimes we can only do two out of them, and then the others are delayed, so.
Okay, I'm just curious what we're giving up to do this one. And so out of the one point two-ish.
We had this left, we had this leftover.
Okay. Oh, so, so out of the one point two million, is the engineering services fee included?
It is not, so the city is going to cover the full cost of the engineering fees.
Okay, so we're looking at about sixty thousand plus a year for two years. Plus the eighty thousand?
It, well, so with.
Putting this across two budgets?
Well, yes, so, so the actual construction cost for the bridge will be during the. It'll probably be twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Well, actually, it'll probably be split between the two fiscal years, because usually they start in May, and they'll, they'll line up going through July. The engineering fees, the design engineering fees will be for the twenty, this current fiscal year, so it'd be twenty twenty-one, and then the engineering will carry over into next fiscal year, so it'll be twenty-one, twenty-two. Essentially, with, with road project planning, when we try to estimate engineering costs. We look at, there, there's generally two phases, there's preliminary or design engineering, and then there's a construction engineering element of it. Generally, for these road projects, it's a best practice to kind of estimate those costs of the two combined at about twenty-five percent of what the actual construction cost is. So we look at ten percent for design engineering, usually fifteen percent for the construction engineering element. Reason why the construction engineering is a little bit more is because you, you have construction inspectors there basically whenever the contractor's working for a quality assurance measure.
Okay. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Will Coxon?
Thanks for the information. As I recall, there were, there were three major projects that were coming up the last time we talked about these things, and one was Forest Street, because the, the pilings for that were so deteriorated, and so while it looks, you know, some, somewhat okay from the top. There's a lot going on underneath, and contrast to the Cross Street Bridge, which looks pretty pitiful from the top, but structurally seems much more sound than, so. Can you remind me where that fits into this, this timeline? So if we're doing the Forest Street Bridge now, and then following up with the Huron River Drive improvements, and then I just forget what the timeline is for the Cross Street construction. And is that also something we're going to apply for this grant for?
With the, Francis, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you, did I?
No, that's okay, I'll let you go. I know that's on our next round of applications, is that right, Rachel?
Yes, that's how I understand it. The, the year that's, that's in my head is maybe twenty twenty-six for Cross Street. Forrest really needed this, because you're right at the point where you can save it, Cross Street is beyond that point. We have plans to actually completely redesign the bridge, so we wanted to get Forrest into the M.DOT funding, get that one going, and then Cross Street can wait a couple more years. Forrest, you were going to have to load rate it if you didn't address it, so Cross Street won't be, I, I think in, the year that I have in my head is twenty twenty-six, but I, I might be off a couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Oh yeah, um.
Yes.
Sorry, I don't think you can see me.
I didn't see your hands.
Steve stole one of my questions, I was kind of curious what the timeline, in my head, I was thinking like twenty-three for Cross Street. But I, I guess I just got, you know, got the answer for that, but I just kind of wanted to reiterate just how exciting the, the fact that more pedestrian accessibility is included in this. I think it's obviously what the community wants, and it's, it's really good to see this play out in, in the proposal, so, thank you.
You're welcome, Councilmember Morgan?
This is just a note. I, I, I thought that it was a time when we were looking over the budget, looking at projects, and we were asked to look at projects in each ward, and to itemize them, which ones were most important or whatnot, and I know that we did the. Cross Street up to our prospect, I know we was over there by Park Ridge Homes, and so I thought, I thought it was something going on in each ward, based on some of the votes that we took, and which ones were more important based on price, and so that's all I got, thank you.
So Mayor, if I could respond to that, over the next four years, there will be three projects that one is going to occur in each ward of the city. We have different pots of money that we get road funding from. So the ones that we had talked about doing in each ward were ones that are supported by the Washtenaw County Road Village. So right now, the first project that we're going to be doing next year is Oakwood Street between Congress and Sherman. And we have, Adams was another one, and, and I don't remember the other third one off the top of my head, but, but those are going to be occurring over the next four years, we are planning for those and moving forward on them. The other source of funding that we get is through the Washtenaw Area Transportation Study Federal Application, and those are typically your larger projects, and there's a separate list of projects that were already identified, this is part of that. So those are just a few of the pots that we have for road funding.
Thank you.
We're going to have to write Mayor Pete.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, Mayor, this is Rachel, I just, I wanted to respond to what Annie said, sorry, Councilmember Somerville. So we may, the twenty twenty-three, don't forget too, that we will prob, we will have to apply for the Cross Street Bridge a couple of years ahead of getting the funding too. So maybe twenty twenty-three is a year that we would apply for Cross Street Bridge, and maybe that's why that year is sticking out to you, I just, I wanted to throw that in. Because it, you do have to apply for the funding a couple of years ahead, ahead of time, so, thank you. You're welcome.
Alright, thanks for that, Rachel. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Clerk of Lingo, would you call the row please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And thanks to OHM, Rachel, and the others there, and Mr. Akers, and Rachel, wish you and everyone at OHM a very happy holiday season. And in this season, stay safe, stay healthy, and above all, prosper in the new year. Good to see you.
Yeah, you too, I'm going to stick on for the next, the next.
Okay.
The next bullet point, but yeah, everything right back at everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two seven one, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti. Whereas the City of Ypsilanti have been allocated federal funds through the Washtenaw Area Transportation Study to reconstruct Huron River Drive between Cornell and La Forge. And where the engineer, OHM, has prepared, prepared a proposal to provide a road diet study and conceptual engineering design for the project. And whereas the road diet study and conceptual design is necessary to identify necessary improvements to make the road safer for motorized and non-motorized users. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Ypsilanti approves a proposal from OHM for the road diet study and conceptual engineering design for an amount of ninety-five thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. That the mayor is authorized to sign this proposal, and any change orders may be approved by the city manager to facilitate the completion of this work.
I moved.
Mayor, you're muted.
I'm sorry, Mr. Akers, do you have anything for us?
Yes, Mayor. Huron River Drive between Cornell and La Forge has been approved as a pavement reconstruction in twenty twenty-three as part of our Watts federal funding application. In order to begin this project, OHM has prepared a proposal to complete a road diet study and provide conceptual engineering for it. The specific tasks associated with the proposal include the base plan development, the road diet study to evaluate potentially reducing the number of traffic lanes, and a conceptual design and opinion of probable cost for the project. As part of this proposal, we've asked the engineer to look at the addition of a shared use pathway or bike lane on this stretch of road, and look at intersection safety improvements at the intersection on this stretch of road. Especially La Forge and Huron River Drive, which is actually one of the busiest pedestrian intersections in the city. The conceptual engineering phase of this project is necessary to identify what improvements are going to be made to the road, so more detailed design engineering plans can be completed. The cost of the proposal is ninety-five thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. I do want to get warn council that this project is much larger than what we typically see. And due to this, we're anticipating that the engineering costs will also be higher than what we typically see for a road construction, reconstruction project. We're planning on, we're going to continue to work with OHM to make sure that the city's costs are as efficient as possible with a project this large. The total cost of the project is estimated currently at three point two million dollars, with two point zero eight million of it covered by federal funds through Watts. We are actively working with Watts to try to narrow that gap, but currently that is what the projection is. It concludes my summary, and Engineer Jackson and I are available to answer any questions regarding the proposal.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments from council or staff? Okay, oh, Councilmembers, Will Coxon?
Always. You know, I ride my bike down this stretch of road on a regular basis, and, and it's dangerous. The, the pavement that's there right now is, is when you go to go between lanes, if you're trying to, you know, if you're going eastbound and trying to make the, the left turn on La Forge, there's two significant ruts in that. That you could easily get your, your bike wheel caught in and thrown off, so it, it's great that this is, this is being done. I have a couple of questions about the, the traffic study and, and coordination with EMU. So there's talk about having a multi-use path here as part of this construction. EMU, there's already a path along the south side of Huron River Drive, and I'm not sure who owns that, if that's an easement or if that's EMU property, and, and I'm wondering how, you know, travel down that will, you know, what the anticipated effects are on. You know, if you're doing a study, looking at how much bike and pedestrian traffic is at that point, it seems like that would lessen that, and so, you know, is there a coordination with EMU to incorporate the, the path that's already there?
Basically, you can go ahead and answer this if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, no problem. Um, so I, I think that the existing path on the south side, we don't have specific concerns on, it's the north end that we noticed there's. People are already using that north end in the M.DOT right-of-way, that is, we want to start bringing pedestrians to that south end, so they're using the pathway over there. So we don't have anything specific to coordinate with EMU, we do want to make sure that we're getting peak season, so we're not proposing to do this until next September, so we're hopefully, EMU is getting a little bit back to normal, we can get some normal traffic counts. So we won't be diving into that till, till September, but I think really focusing on the, how the pedestrians move within the intersections, and then how we can make it safer on the north side of the road, because that appears to be used, but it's not an official pathway. And that, if you look, it looks like they're already using that. So the south side, I don't think we have any concerns down there with that path, it's more the intersections improving safety, and on the north side, improving the safety, and getting pedestrians from that north side to the south side in a safe way.
And Councilmember Will Coxon to add, you know, our DPS department has a pretty good relationship with the Facilities Management Group at, at EMU. We have some partnerships and different things we work on, and I interact with Mr. Otto on a fairly regular basis, so we're going to be talking about this with them, you know, just keeping them abreast and, and getting some input from them on it as well.
Thanks, yeah, that's great, because I mean, the, the pedestrian traffic on the north side of the road, I mean, it's just a worn groove in the grass, you know, by La Forge, it's just, you know, it's dirt next to the railroad tracks, and as it goes up past, you know, what used to be McDonald's and things like that, that's very dicey. Thing to, to navigate on foot, for sure, so.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Clerk of Lingo, would you call the row please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Council, have a happy holiday.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, thank you everyone, happy holiday to all.
Council, moving on to the next resolution, number twenty twenty-two seven two, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti. Whereas the City of Ypsilanti approved twenty-five thousand dollars in support of the Rutherford Pool renovations in twenty nineteen. And whereas the remain, remainder of funding will be paid from Friends of Rutherford Pool and Michigan Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, awarded in November twenty eighteen. And whereas the city must be reimbursed the grant award of three hundred thousand dollars and make the capital improvement fund available by budget amendment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council authorizes the city manager to adjust the budget to pay invoices for the Rutherford Pool renovations.
I'll move.
Support?
Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you. Oh, oh gosh. No, I was asking if there's anyone here that wanted to make any comments on Rutherford Pool, what's going on? I see Mr. Jacobs has joined us, do you have comments for that?
No, I'm here to answer any questions about the packet and the material provided here, including all of the change orders, which are the cause of budget amendment. So that's really what we're here for, is to make sure that we can cover all the change orders. Those have been approved by the architect and by Ford, the Friends of Rutherford Pool, and so everyone's in agreement, we need it, these improvements have been made, we just got to pay for it. And so that's why I'm here to ask you folks to consider the budget amendment, so we can proceed with payment.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yeah, so I'm looking through this, does anyone happen to know the square footage of the roof? Or just the building itself, I, I guess I could look it up, but.
I do not.
And I should have done before, but.
I don't off the top of my head, I mean, I could find that information pretty easy and get back to you though.
So yeah, the roof number looks really high.
The, the roof number, maybe I can address that, I was going to cover some of this in the liaison report, but what happened with the roof is that when they started. The idea was to, to re-roof and then put solar panels on top of it, and they've separated those two things out, and what happened is when they started removing the roofing material, they found a lot more things on top of the building than they expected. And in the process of removing that, they also kind of dug up some of the, the electrical conduit, and so all that stuff had to be replaced, and they're taking that. And they're taking that into account. There's a lot of costs that they're adding into that. But my understanding is that they've got, they've raised the funding for that as well. So the twenty-five thousand, if I understand this correctly, the twenty-five thousand dollars from the city was a given. We're moving that money so that it can pay those bills. But they've also done a lot of fundraising to take that into account. And I think the overall, I think, is, you know, the add-ins are like thirty-seven thousand dollars that they have to account for. The roof was part of it, and there were some other things that cost a bit more than they expected.
Was there some remediation being done? Because I noticed that, you know, the removing the vermiculite was another seventy-two hundred bucks, and, you know, usually it would be that high if you expect some asbestos or something like that. Was that a concern?
That I don't know. I don't know. I would have to ask Jessica about that.
One to fill Councilmember Brown Jones Chance, I'm sorry, in on what's been going on with the pool and what is going on?
Yeah. So far, as I can tell, there's no issue with the removal of the vermiculite, nothing that would require a controlled substance report or anything like that. Anything that would be flagged by DEQ is very hazardous, and we haven't had any environmental studies become necessary through the removal. So it's pretty run-of-the-mill with an old building. You're going to find some of this stuff, and when you do, you got to remove it. And like Councilmember Will Coxon mentioned, the city contribution is unchanged at twenty-five thousand. This is really money that Forbes has raised, that they've signed off on in terms of the change orders and the work to be done. The roof was competitively bid, and so we took a competitive bid from Duke for that work. So I think things are in order. It's not particularly alarming the change order for the removal of vermiculite.
Yeah, so I guess the concern really is, you know, because it's expensive, do all parties have enough to get it done? And, you know, regardless of whether or not our contribution changes, you know, it'd be bad to spend twenty-five thousand dollars or any amount of money and the project not get completed. So that's why I was asking, but I think that answers all the questions I had.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Will Coxon, do you have anything else you want to, before the vote?
I guess I could just add in here, I went to the walkthrough on Friday morning, so every month while they've been doing this, you know, they've had walkthroughs, and this was the last one. Jessica Fall, who's the president and chair of the board, is very diligent in terms of, you know, holding Phoenix accountable for the subcontractors and what's going on there. And so, you know, as soon as I got there, she was like, you know, pointing at them, going, this needs to be done, and this needs to be done, and this. And they're holding off on paying that until they get exactly what they want out of the subcontractors. And she's got a running list and a spreadsheet of the things that need to be finished, you know, with the, yeah, I'll give the rest during the update, because that involves the solar panels and things like that. So, but there's due diligence. They have raised the money. They realize, and everything should be accounted for. There are some things that, some capital improvements that they will have to do fundraising for in the future, but I'll address that later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. If there's no more question, any more questions or comments, Clerk Alinga, would you call the row, please?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to the next item, resolution number twenty twenty dash two seven three, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas in the recently concluded fiscal year 2020, 2021, the city council approved a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to organizations that serve the youth in the city. And whereas Educate Youth is an organization currently serving the youth in the city of Ypsilanti, and whereas Educate Youth has submitted a grant application for five thousand dollars, and now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves a mini-grant to educate youth in the amount of five thousand to support youth programming.
Some of. For.
Been moved and supported. Councilmember Simmons, I know you were excited about this when we spoke the other day. Do you want to talk to council about it?
Sure. So, yeah, so we have the mini-grant that was submitted by Educate Youth and myself and Councilmember Morgan and Mayor Pro Tem Brown, you know, chatted about it, as we do in our small group, and thought it was worthy to bring forward for a full vote. And we know that Educate Youth does fantastic work here in the city supporting the youth. And so, you know, we wholeheartedly endorse it and hope that, you know, the rest of council will vote yes to support this great organization that's supporting youth in our area.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan or Mayor Pro Tem Brown, do you have anything to add?
I just want to echo, I want to thank Councilwoman Simmons and Mayor Pro Tem for bringing it up. I think Educate Youth does a fantastic job of being consistent, working with families and youth in all different types of situations, whether it's education, whether it's activities, sports, or just social programming. So I do think it's best for us, best practice is to support some of the organizations that support some of our most vulnerable. So I support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything really additional to add, but just say, you know, yes, I hope that council will support this. I think that Educate Youth does great work with our young people and families in the community and stays abreast of even what's happening in the community and educating the young people on what those pieces are. And so I look forward to continuing to see their work with our young folks, and I wholeheartedly support this.
All right, thank you. Any other council members' comments? Okay, I, oh, council members, Will Coxon?
I'm just making the statement that I'm recusing myself from discussion and from the vote, and that, because I'm married to the executive director of Educate Youth.
Okay, thank you.
What? I didn't know that.
I do want to ask a question, Mayor.
Yes.
For the grants, I just want to ask, is there is there an amount of times somebody could apply for them? Are they given out once annually? Or can people do as much as till the money's gone?
Well, my understanding, and maybe the, that's a question for the city manager. I don't know if, I do have some comments on this. Maybe city manager would want to answer your question.
So we haven't had a lot of applicants, but what we have done is make sure that it's not in the same fiscal year. Actually, I think that it's not even in the same year. I think Educate Youth did have one before, but it's not in the same year. So we would say that they do qualify. There were no stipulations when the money was budgeted, but I think that that's just a good practice to do it per year if they apply.
So is this a first-come, first-served basis annually?
It is, and we haven't had people, you know, knocking our door down for it. So, yeah, it is on a first-come, first-served basis. And as the committee sees fit, after you evaluate what they're doing, and if you decide that it is worthy of the award, then you would put it before council. So it could be that somebody may apply and not make it to the, you know, to that point.
This group definitely is, I just wanted to ask. Thank you so much.
Can I just add something on to the end of that?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, there were no stipulations put in. We originally allocated these funds. But I know that what I've been looking for when reviewing the applications is like, for instance, in this example, where you had an organization who was awarded in nineteen, and now applied in twenty, is that the funds are not necessarily being asked for the same exact reasons, and if you are asking, that you're showing that there's a reason that this investment is necessary to like move you forward, because we want to work on sustainability, right? And so that you're figuring out what you can do to sustain yourself, so that if we were not around or we did not have this money, you would still be able to function. And so this is what I saw in this application, that it's not the exact same application as we received in the nineteen-twenty budget year. So that was something that I kept in mind personally as I was reviewing the application.
Thank you. I, if, Councilmember Somerville, did you have anything for this? Okay, I would just like to say that I think maybe if we're going to keep this in the budget, that budget time, we might look at some of the things that were mentioned about granting the same, to the same agency more than once or whatever. But also that I think that we should, I don't know that we actually have publicized the fact that we have this money set aside for youth programs within the city, because I know that there are lots of other youth programs that I think have, if they really knew the funds were there, would be making applications. So that we would not have any, and I don't know that we have in the past had any of the twenty-five thousand left, but I would like to see it much more competitive. You know, that the other agent, youth agencies and youth programs know that it's there and know that they can apply for it. And that's all I have on that one. So maybe it's something we can discuss when it's budget time again, so. All right, Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes, how much, if this five thousand dollars is awarded, how much would be left in the budget for this grant?
Reagan, can you, I think this is the first one this budget year.
Right.
Some, hi Frances, good afternoon, council. Yes, someone already applied. We did award to the baseball for the athletic, let me double.
Football, the football team, I remember that. So, yes.
Five thousand?
So they did get five thousand. That is correct.
We do in five dollar increments.
Okay, so we've got fifteen.
Right. Between now and July.
Yeah, thanks, Reagan.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's the youth football, sorry.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Somebody wanted to ask a question.
Councilmember Morgan?
Okay, yes.
Does that money, you may have already covered this, does that money carry over to the next fiscal year? Like, if we had twenty-five thousand and we only gave out ten thousand, does that fifteen carry over to the next year, or must we give it all out?
Reagan, I think, do we carry over any money?
We don't carry over, so any amount that's not been used will be, will go back to our fund balance. And then the city council would have to allocate it again to the following budget, to the next budget cycle.
Okay, so this is not an annual concurrently set amount. So like, if we, if only one person got it last year, that twenty thousand goes back, so we can ask for it again?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Is it, okay, so is there a way we can put a stipulation in where it can perhaps grow? Maybe at point in time, certain organizations may need ten thousand. It may, in four years, it may be seventy thousand there. This is wishful thinking. And maybe somebody may need a roof for thirty thousand. I don't know. But I'm just saying, like, what sense does it make to keep taking it back? Is that saying that we're not, the need is not there, or should we lessen it?
I was saying, but something for budget time to talk about.
That's what I was going to say. Yeah.
All right, I digress.
Mayor.
No, that was a legitimate question, but we will discuss it at budget time. Councilmember Simmons, your hand, what's up?
Oh, I was just going to say, and it might be, maybe it makes sense then to also talk about additional, you know, parameters, if we want to be a little bit more specific or intentional about how we do these grants. But, yeah, budget time seems to make sense, and then we can kind of maybe, because I wouldn't mind having some, you know, a little better parameters, because if we started to advertise this, you know, we would maybe get more interest, so. Thanks.
I do think we need to make it more widely known. So if nothing else, Clerk Alinga, would you call the row, please?
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Affirmative, yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one recusal.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for that recusal, Councilmember Will Coxon. Thank you.
Because your vote would have tipped it.
Okay, next item.
Council, the next item on the agenda is liaison reports. SEMCOG is the first report.
Okay, I sent everyone, I hope you got your, it was through by email, the last SEMCOG report that I received from SEMCOG. We did have a meeting, and there will be a general assembly meeting in January that will be virtual, and I will forward the information on that to all council members. One thing I did learn from SEMCOG about that SEMCOG has going on, and I tried to, Mr. Jacobs and I, we played a good game of phone tag yesterday. I wanted to share it with him. But right now, SEMCOG is offering the, I have the opportunity to all businesses, as long as they are in a municipality that is a member of SEMCOG, to do free videos for the business if they want to do that. And I, I think this is something I'd really like to see us get out to our businesses all over, so that the city, they do not just have to be DDA, they can be DDA, non-DDA. But if a business would like, and they're doing it because of the slowness of business and the closing of business and during this period of time, the pandemic. So if anyone is interested, I will give the information to both Mr. Jacobs and Clerk Alinga, and if it could go maybe on the city's website, and maybe even if we could put it, I don't know, wherever we get the most traffic. So if it's going to go on Facebook, so, but I think that that is good. They will do the video, they will publicize the video, and I'm not sure all the details about it, but it's something I think that we should encourage our businesses to take advantage of. That's it for SEMCOG.
Council, the next item under liaison reports is Watts.
Yeah, so this month's meeting, which was supposed to be tomorrow, is canceled, but we should be meeting in January.
Watts cancels almost as much as the urban county.
You know, it's definitely during this COVID season, because it definitely wasn't quite this, you know, but they make sure when we got something that needs approval on the agenda, we're there, so.
No, I remember when Councilmember Murdock was on there. He was constantly saying, too, the meeting was canceled, so it's not just now. Okay.
Next item is urban county.
Meeting was canceled.
Next item, DDA.
We do have a DDA board meeting this week. I promise I'm not canceling it. And we're set to discuss a virtual pub crawl idea that came out of our department. You know, a lot of businesses rely on New Year's Eve and that holiday for a lot of traffic. And they're doing cocktails in lieu of having customers seated indoors, or even a lot of places outdoors just simply aren't offering anything just late into the year. And so what they are doing is a lot of carryout, and so we're leveraging some gift card drawings to help advertise and market around the. Uh, to help advertise and market around the holiday, um, to try and do a little bit of incentive uh for customers who. Are looking to support local bars and restaurants, despite the challenging times. Uh, and then the other noteworthy point uh is the Christmas lights all around town, I want to thank Ron and his department for all their hard work. Um, in Depot Town and downtown especially, uh, I think we have more lights up this year than we have in a long time, including Riverside Park. Um, and the Depot Town tree, uh, around West Cross, we don't have GFCI outlets on the poles, but we got them powered by batteries now. And so the whole town is uh pretty lit up uh for the holiday season. And uh, I'm hoping that we can, you know, bring people uh down safely for the shopping season. Um, and just bring a little bit more cheer to the holidays.
Thank you for that, and it's nice to see the lights back in Riverside Park.
I can see the lights from my apartment inside.
Uh huh. It's been a while, it's been a while since they've been there. That place used to be very really beautiful and people came from all over to drive through Riverside Park, so. Thank you, and I, uh, special thanks to uh city manager McMullin for uh applying for that DTE grant. To help with that, so thank you. Okay.
Next liaison report is Friends of Rutherford Pool.
Um, as I was saying earlier, I went, uh, did the walkthrough on Friday, um, you know, there are still some things, there are, there are minor things that that need to be dealt with in terms of. You know, uh, some touch-ups on the paint, some of the the plastering and thing, those kinds of things. Um, that both Phoenix and and the board have, are very aware of and and holding said contractors accountable for that. The uh roof um created some, some unforeseen costs when they started redoing it. The uh, so they they worked through that and in terms of the solar project that that's going on top of it. Um, there were a couple different, um, we had a meeting this past week and and there were a couple different options for that and so. You know, there was an option that um. Yeah, through Dave Strinsky, there was an organization that would fund the, the cost of uh subsidize the cost of the solar panels and they would take the tax credits for it. Um, and that's um. Got more complicated, the, the, at the end of the year, the finances weren't what, what they had anticipated earlier in the year and so. Um, you know, that could go forward, but that would have to be transferred into the next fiscal year. And it's not sure how the tax credits would work for that, um, the other option was to uh go ahead with direct ownership of the panels. Um, with the money that's already been raised and and basically put about two thirds of the panels on and then uh. Proceed with a um, uh, you know, a capital improvement fundraising program. Um, after the fact to add back the other third of the uh, of the panels. Um, and so one is a slight, you know, slightly complicated arrangement. The other one's straightforward, but doesn't allow for the full, for the full um array of panels that they had thought about and so. Uh, the vote was to go ahead with the two thirds, um, because it's much more straightforward, um, and then, you know. Donors like to give to to capital improvement kind of things and so, um, the anticipated eleven thousand dollars that we would take to to finish their raise. You know, I I think that's a, it's an easy ask over the next few years in terms of getting that up to there. But with the, with the amount of solar that they've uh projected to put on, that would take care of all the electrical costs. For the building and for the pool, so I think it's a great thing to be able to have that renewable energy source. Um, and a, and a good plan, uh, good simplified plan uh to meet those needs, so.
Thank you.
Council, next item on the agenda is council proposed business.
Okay, um, let's start with the. Councilmember Simmons.
Well, all right, hello, I think um, just the one thing that I would like to talk about and um, I hope I'm not catching um. Mayor Pro Tem Brown and um council member Morgan off guard, we talked about this a little bit, but just about the. Reviews, so I just thought this might be a good time since um I didn't uh, we get it added to the agenda, but we've had a chance to look at them and I think. We agreed that it was an okay format uh to kind of move on. And so um, what um, I, you know, made sense is for us to, these are the reviews, sorry, for city manager and city clerk. Um, but um, perhaps our next meeting that we get it on the agenda to talk about, you know, have it as an agenda item to talk about. And uh, explain the format and whatnot, and I can send that out in advance. And then we can kind of get the process started, I think, let's see, our next meeting though would be after the holidays and that just seems like maybe a good time to kind of do that. So I can, like I said, send out um what the forms look like. And then um, you know, we can, I guess, talk through the process more if, if, you know, in in our next meeting. But I can get that, you know, to you in advance, so, does that sound okay, uh, mayor and anybody else, I guess? Okay.
Yes, it does.
Okay, this is good, um, okay. Anthony, um, I'm sorry, Anthony, uh, clerk Kalenga, can we, can we have that um added on there uh or, you know? Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, I'm, I'm locked out of my city email and Andrew is helping me with that, so as soon as I get that up, I'll send it from my city email, so it's been a little bit of drama. The past, you know, few days and, um, yeah, so, but anyway, I'll get that out and we'll get that on the next agenda um to talk.
Been there, done that with the city email, wow, we're on the city email, when do we change services? Um, it looks like we're on track to be done at the end of the year, is that right, Chris? Jacobs, Christopher Jacobs? I think so, I think by the end of the year, that's when uh we purpose to be over onto the net, I know it's going fast.
Yeah, actually, so council, just so you all know, uh, and and this will, uh, this is going to impact you. Uh, over the Christmas break, when the city hall shuts down, you will not have access to your email. Um, because that is when the changeover is happening. Uh, we are hoping to have everything back up and running uh on the fourth, but most city hall staffers also will not have access to their email. Uh, this is one of the really, really tricky things of of completely migrating over uh to a new system. Uh, with not as much cooperation as we had hoped for.
Well, our um login.
Because of that. Excuse me, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I just had a question, is, will our lo- login still work after the fourth or we have to recreate?
We're gonna, you're probably gonna have to recreate new passwords and things like that and actually upload everything. Um, you guys are the most unique of all of the uh people at city a- as always, like. Like you guys know, a lot of your emails were deactivated on accident purpose, kind of, um, which makes no sense, uh, but. That will never happen again, uh, but the uh, um. But the uh, but. We will have an email break and there's nothing, and we're gonna publicize it on our, on our fa- on our uh, Facebook and our city. Website, but there's really not much we can do, uh, but it will give you guys as much as you did holiday break. So do you know what the duration is gonna be?
Mr. Myers, would you please uh make sure all of council has uh staffs um. So that we could, so that we can reach staff by text if necessary.
Of course.
Just if we get an alternate um email address, if you have one too, in case we have your um sign-on information. Yes. Um, email to you because it's supposed to be up January fourth, so.
You guys will be getting an email uh or a notification on kind of the process, but. Honestly, uh, we've been trying to work out everyone and their, and their computer logins and and uh. The seven of you are a completely diff- separate uh animal. And so uh, you have not been forgotten, uh, but it's, you just, there will be a, a, an added step. But hopefully it'll be much easier and I, I, I'm almost a hundred percent confident, because you can never be a hundred percent confident. That we're gonna have so much better service that you all are gonna be uh, uh, very happy.
Well, we look forward to it, thank you, and council member Morgan, did you have a comment?
Not on that, no.
No, okay, all right, um, clerk Alenga.
We're still doing council business, right?
Right, yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes, so it's on me, um, mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Um, actually, I don't, the reviews were a part of the conversation, email has been a problem, but I'm so glad to hear that we're gonna be switching. And also, I've been just saying, um, keeping folks abreast of like the tree trimming that has been happening, so it's been happening daily over in um, on the south side and in Heritage Park neighborhood. Um, and that it goes back to the conversation we had about power outages um over the summer when we had the storms and so they have been keeping to their word and taking care of all of these things. Um, to see that, uh, and I think where they're almost done in this area, so very excited that that will assist and support um in. Keeping power going for all the residents um on this side uh of the ward, so that is all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you, I've seen the trucks out and busy, good, okay, uh, council member Somerville.
Um, you know, I don't really have any um proposed business tonight, I did just want to thank uh staff, I, there are a lot of people that made comments about the lights. Um, both before wondering why they're, you know, where they were and then after with just how nice it was to see them um and brighten up. Everyone's spirits this year, um, yeah, I just hope everyone has a nice holiday, we had a rough, you know, of. This year has been tough, I think, for all of us, especially when we have to make decisions, um, so I, you know. We, we, you know, wishing everybody a happy new year, hopefully twenty twenty-one is, is much better for us all.
Yes, thank you, all right, council member uh Jones Chance.
Uh, yeah, the only thing I really wanted to make mention of uh tonight was uh, I hope that we keep the affordable housing conversation going. Uh, last week's work session kind of. Uh, eliminated some gaps in in understanding that are out there and uh. You know, there's a, it, it is a huge issue and it, it's something we uh, we really need to focus in on.
That's it, thank you, council member Morgan.
Thank you, mayor, I, I only have a few things, so. Well, uh, first, I just want to mention about White Pack, there is a meeting this Thursday. And um, I, I was talking with uh Gail from Educate Youth about this new um idea to go uh in concert with the community policing. Uh, something called Civic, which is the Citizens Interface Virtual Inclusion Curriculum. Since the goal is to uh find other credible means to engage law enforcement and po- and citizens. I wanted to give a shout out to um, well, I sent uh council um something from a strategic partner named Jason Dixon about the hundred families, hundred homes of the, the route to uh smart cities. Maybe if you guys take a look at it, think if it's viable, if there's some, um, something there, we can probably uh revisit it. Um, the cream is doing their uh, I'm, I'm helping sponsor the, the COVID relief tour, um, that they're gonna provide a mask for every man, woman, and child, I think over twenty-one thousand masks. That um, that'll be free um for December twenty-first, uh, right at the um, the parking lot between Perry and uh. Park Ridge, and there's gonna be a truck giving out beds and TVs and cocoa and a few things, this um, it's gonna be a two-hour thing, so. That's the cream and then I'll, I'll forward that information to you guys, and the last one, uh, in concert with um bottles and backpack, it's the first annual, it's called Everybody Eaten, where we've um. Going to give about eight hundred meals through four um restaurants, on the twenty-first is gonna be Cup East, on the twenty-second is gonna be A Taste of Soul. On the twenty-third is gonna be Madea's Kitchen and on the twenty-fourth is gonna be Mo Peas, where the goal is to uh use a QR, a QR code, I believe that's what it is, for. Over eight hundred families to to pick up meals and so we're working on transportation and things of that nature, so I would love to. Pass this information on to you so you can circulate it through your uh constituents base and this is for everybody, anybody, so in the first eight hundred. Um, I'll be there on site every day, um, just to help things go smoothly, but um, I wanted to say that and I want to thank again, um. Uh, Ron Akers and his crew, I want to thank the fire department and I want to thank uh everybody on staff uh who's helped us get through these financial times and um, I appreciate you, um. That's it, thank you.
Very thank you, uh, council member Morgan, could you please get the information about the uh eight hundred meals?
I'll have it to you guys, give it to who?
Okay, if you, no, let me finish, if you would get it to uh clerk Alenga and have him just um. Pass it on to us and maybe also post it on the city's Facebook page.
He'll have it bef- after, after the meeting's over.
All right, thank you, appreciate that, and uh council member Will Coxson.
Thank you, mayor, um, a couple of things, uh, one, a belated thank you to Ron Akers um and staff, uh. There's a constituent, um, former next-door neighbor on Pearl Street, uh, ninety-year-old woman who uh accesses her garage through the, through the alleyway. And a number of years ago, the city had uh put some uh, some material in the driveway as a, as a, to fill holes and things like that, but it's caused problems for her and so. Ron diligently, you know, kept track of this and and sent folks out to help her and. Um, while the, the actual problem couldn't be, couldn't be resolved, um, they've agreed to do some plumbing for her so that she can, she can get out of her house. Um, so I just want to say thanks for, thanks Ron for that. I wanted to do a couple of things, um, I'm the liaison to the uh, the Sustainability Commission. And uh, there, they had a meeting last night and the previous meeting before that was uh coincided with one of our council meetings, so I didn't get to attend that. Um, they have a new council member, or a new commissioner in Desiree Simmons. Um, and so last night was the first time I got to, to uh participate in a meeting that she was at. Uh, Beth Gibbons has been uh extended, as we had voted before, as a non-resident, so it was good to see her uh in that context. Um, wh- where they are in their process at, at this point is, uh, they've gone through their goals uh for the coming year and it's a long list and so last night they went through the goals. And uh, you know, kind of divvied up, you know, who, who was the point person for that and who was gonna be the, who were gonna be the collaborators? And so, you know, we should expect uh some information from that, um, Bonnie Westler uh from staff has helped them with the uh, um. The draft of the annual report and so we'll see those goals uh presented in that one, that comes to us in early next year. Um, lots of good conversation, um, the energy for that commission is, is kind of changing with new people and and there's lots of discussion and lots of uh. Lots of ideas there, so um, it was a good meeting, um, it went a little long, but uh lots of information there and and uh there will have to be follow-up on that as well. The uh, the other thing that, that I've been looking at is uh Penn Dam, and so there's been a lot of activity. Recently in, in terms of uh progress on that and so I have a weekly meeting with the uh here on River Watershed Council. Um, as part of a core team that, that uh looks at that, um, you know, there was the DNR grant that was awarded for that, uh, there was an RFP that went out. Uh, Christopher Jacobs and and Daniel Brown from the uh here on River Watershed Council were uh had a pre-bid meeting with uh seven different firms. Uh, uh, engineering firms that are familiar with dam removal and the, and the studies that go into uh prepping for that. Um, and uh, what has happened is, you know, the, the bids have come back and all seven of those firms have um. Been involved, there's only three bids, but what happened was those seven firms have joined together in different collaborations. Um, so everybody that was solicited has responded and there's three bids that came in, uh, the deadline was the December eleventh. And so those need to be reviewed to see uh, you know, where that's gonna go and so what's gonna happen in this phase of the uh, of the preparation for dam removal is. Is to continue those studies that, um, you know, during the feasibility study that, that was presented a couple of years ago. Um, there are, there's a lot of information that was um, uh, people thought was lacking, but the, you know, that was a, just a, uh, you know, a basic study to see if it was feasible and so now. We go through and do follow-up things like, you know, look in more detail at the, at the sediment analysis. You know, take more samples, do a best chemistry study uh going upstream and 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 look at the sediment, look at it, the engineering for the uh. The two bridges that cross the impoundment, um, which are a railroad bridge um and uh superior road bridge. Um, and so the, the ask for that is to to um have uh engineering design. Studies and analysis for, for what it's gonna take, you know, what that's gonna look like, what the, the bridges will need and what the sediments will need, but what more information we need from the sediments. So we can get a better idea of what's in place and in how to manage those uh going forward. That's all kind of under the, the guise of the, um, here-on- river watershed council, um, as the technical, uh, advisors on that. Um, the city's part in that is, in, in this is, is, uh, uh, public engagement. Um, as part of the grants, um, we submitted a, a, a public engagement plan. Um, and, uh, now it's time to move that into gear. And so, um, conversations with, with Christopher Jacobs, um, we're looking at, uh, people to do the facilitation for that. And there's, uh, you know, a couple of people that have been approached about that to get bids on that. Um, and both of them have, have facilitated meetings for, for council and for, uh, for the city in general. So, um, you know, we're confident that those are, those are competent people to be doing that. Um, but we're looking for that, that second bid. Um, so with that, you know, in, uh, you know, the next, uh, couple of meetings, uh, I'll get more information about what that looks like. There's a few committees that, that need to be filled out. There's a lot of people on those already, um, but we're gonna be soliciting for, for other people to be involved in those. And so, um, I'll have, I'll bring more information, uh, as, as, as we get through that, that process for, um, for people to join those committees. So, um, it's exciting. I think there's, you know, the, a lot of people from both sides of the issue have been looking for this information. And I, um, you know, this grant really gives us the opportunity to, to, to fill in that, that information that would, that has been lacking. Um, you know, um, uh, there was a presentation to the Friends of, uh, Penn Park on Sunday after, or Sunday evening. Um, Mayor Richardson was there as well. Um, Daniel Brown, um, presented, uh, basically the same presentation that he gave to city council, uh, to the Friends of Penn Park. There were a lot of questions. A lot of it was outside of the scope of, of, uh, you know, talking about the park, uh, which was supposed to be the focus of that meeting. But, you know, there, there are legitimate concerns by people within the city and, and landowners from outside the city. Um, so while I was kind of taken aback that this was happening in that context, there, there's still legitimate concerns that need to be addressed and, and, and very good points. And so, uh, we'll be paying attention to that and I'll be bringing that forward in, uh, future meetings. So that's what I've got.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, does that bring us to the mayor's remarks? Uh?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, I've got several things. Yes. Oh, wow. That's not good on my glasses to drop them on the floor. Um. Okay, I did, uh, said, I had a letter, received a letter today from, uh, Supervisor, uh, Stumbo, asking us to support, um, a, um, license plate, uh, for sickle cell. Uh, Representative Peterson has been working on this for some time, uh, months or years, I think, a couple of years or so, uh, to get a, um, license plate, you know, how the license plates have different things on them. And one for sickle cell. And, uh, we were at, I got a letter asking for the city to write a letter of support. So I wanted to put it before council. Uh, I forwarded that, um, email to, I believe, both, um, Clerk Alanga and, uh, City Manager McMullin. And if you two, if, um, would, maybe tomorrow, uh, clerk, if you could just forward it to the rest of council. Uh, if you'd like, I can read the letter to you, but it's just simply supporting that the state would allow for a license plates that would honor, um, and I, I honor, it's kind of hard to use the word honor with, um, something that's, uh, as devastating as sickle cell can be. But to bring attention to, I guess I should say, bring attention to civil, uh, to sickle cell. Um, is there a support or a no, a firm no from?
Is there a reason on why is sickle cell specifically?
Well, it's to bring, it's to bring, uh, attention to it. You know, it is, uh, there are a lot of people that particularly black, as we know, the sickle cell is a black disease. And, uh, many blacks, young and old, suffer from si- sickle cell. And a sickle cell attack can be very, uh, very hard on the person and, um, and the family. I, I grew up with a couple of, uh, some twins that were sickle cell and it was hard on the family. Uh, council member Somerville.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to chime in, just to kind of maybe explain it a little bit better. Um, so the, I, I saw a picture of the letter that you're speaking of, Mayor. Um, it's in support of Rep. Peterson's House bill that already got a hearing and passed on the House side. And what the letter is advocating for, we would basically, if I'm understanding correctly, the body would, um, pass a resolution in support of the Senate Majority Leader taking up that House bill in committee because that's what's holding it up. Um, and lame duck is happening right now. So, um, we might, I mean, I don't know if it's possible this late in the meeting to make a, a motion and just vote on that right now, if we needed to vote on it. Um, but that blame, like the last two or three session days are tomorrow, Thursday, and maybe one day next week. So, um, if it was something coming from the whole body.
Yes, I see, um, Mr. Barr unmuted himself. So do you have something to share with us?
Yes.
Some words of wisdom?
Well, yes, it's possible.
Okay, it is possible. I thought it was to have a motion to that effect now, if you would like to. Uh, I will entertain a motion if you want to make that motion.
Okay, um, for anyone, or? Yeah, I'm just like, I'm open to making the motion. Yeah, I'm open to making the motion. It sounds like that's what we need to do if, if the, if the body would like to sign on to something like that. Um. And I, I support the bill. Yeah, so I would, I would move to, um, I would just move that council issue, a letter to Senate Majority Leader that we support Rep. Peterson's bill and would like to see a hearing on it.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so it's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, a question.
Yes.
Uh, do these types of nonprofit license plates, do they, uh, there's any portion of the, you know, like the plate fee go to an organization to, you know, to help in any way, or?
I'm not sure. I do know that this would be no cost to the state. The letter did state that, or the pre, prelude to the letter that I got said it would be no cost to the state. Uh, council member Somerville, do you know if, uh, the proceeds from the sale of the license plate would go to the Sickle Cell Foundation?
Um, it does go to, one second, I'm trying to read through this. Um, but the, the, the organization, the money, it would be no cost to the state budget. Um, sorry. They, the, the proceeds would go to, um, organizations that do like education and treatment. So it's not specific in this letter that I'm reading. Um, but it does go for that cause specifically.
Okay.
Thank you.
If it were to happen.
Are there specific percentages or, or just?
Or, Councilmember Wilcoxon has his hand up. Councilmember Wilcoxon.
I, I'm just, uh, trying to, to clarify the resolution here. So basically, we're, we're supporting, um, the fact that this, this, uh, will be brought out of committee and brought into discussion. Um, and so it's not for us to decide where the money goes and those kinds of things, but just to get it to be discussed.
Yes.
Right, that is the point of the, of the motion. Yes.
Yep. One other thing that I'll add, just because I'm a nerd, the, there's a chance that Rep. Peterson's just gonna have to reintroduce this next term, which is after the new year. Um, so there's a chance that we'll be doing this again, just FYI. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan.
I'm still trying to make the connection. Um, I, I guess.
Sorry, this is what I attempted to do and then we kind of got lost in the, like, making the motion part. But like essentially, like, we're just saying, hey, we're a body within, you know, in Michigan and we support this bill. And we've done it before for like other stuff and like.
I'm, I'm not sure if I support a license plate being made for sickle cells. I'm trying to determine, trying to make the connection.
Like, I, I can give an example. We get letters all the time in, in my boss's office from the board, the county board, supporting specific legislation in either the state senate or the house. So it's a very common practice.
True. Uh, council member Wilcoxon.
Uh, I'll defer to, uh, Brian. He had his hand up.
I was just gonna say, I think the, I think the purpose of the plate is to provide some funding for organizations, um, through the plate fee.
Right.
So the plate has something to do with the Secretary of State, correct?
Right.
So they print the plates and, and they actually put like a, a sign, like, you know, like the breast cancer sign. They don't want to put something that represents sickle cell. Okay. So they want to identify the supporters of sickle cell or those who have it.
And, and send the money to the organization.
The money, I get the money portion. I get the money portion, but it's not, it, there's not a specific proceeds. Is it proceeds or is it ten percent of each plate? Regardless, I just want to get the connection to why sickle cell specifically.
Well, I think when you pay the special fee, it's like an extra thing. Like, you're already paying for the license plate, but there's an additional small fee and that goes to those organizations.
Organizations, right.
Thank you for the clarity, everyone.
All right. Councilmember Brown, I mean, Mayor Pro Tim Brown, I saw your hand up. No? Okay. All right. Seeing no other hands or there are no more comments? Uh, Clerk, okay, council member Wilcoxon.
Sorry, I, I just wanted to add, it is, it's, it's, it's an aside. Uh, there's a great story this morning, uh, on the radio about, um, new treatments for sickle cell. And the first, the first person in the nation has gotten this. And, and, uh, basically it's genetic, uh, manipulation, uh, that, uh, is done to the stem cells and then re-introduced into, uh, the patient. And it allows, uh, the patient to, to make normal, uh, red blood cells and that, that aren't, uh, you know, affected by sickle cell. So this is the first human, uh, trial that they, they've been able to do. And, and, you know, it's one of those touching stories where she finally got to get on an airplane because she, she couldn't do that before. And she got to, you know, go see her husband who's been deployed. So, um, but it's, it's a great thing in terms of, you know, my daily world. Um, this is kind of the fruition of, of, you know, uh, collecting money like this for, for research in sickle cell. I think this is a really, um, uh, interesting application of the technology. And, and it's really great that, that, uh, somebody's gonna benefit from that. So, um, certainly in support of this.
Thank you. That, that's, uh, that's exciting news. Uh, sickle cell, when people have an attack, it's very, very painful. So, okay. Um, thank you for that. Uh, Clerk Alanga, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Uh, Clerk Alanga, would you prepare a letter and get it off to, um, I think all, all the places where you need to send it is within the letter.
Motion was just to send it to the, um, Senate Majority Leader. So.
Okay.
It there.
That's what that one letter said. I can make sure to give Andrew the right, uh.
That's not what council approved. This is council approved to send it to the Senate Majority Leader. You need to amend that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what I was saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just saying, I would make sure that you have the right.
That, well, I mean, I get the address.
Yeah.
Okay, I think you're on the same page there of where it's going. Okay, thank you. Um. Whoo, okay, I got that. Let's see. Um, I'm hesitant to bring this up, but I think it's, it's important that if, uh, I would like to ask that, uh, we all got the notice. I got the notice from an email, uh, from, um, Councilmember Morgan. And, um, I had not seen it or heard it until I did get his email. And I think some of the others I've talked to have said that they got it by email. But I would like for, if council and mayor could be notified, uh, anytime there is a lawsuit or some action taken against the city, so, uh, head that, so that we're not reading, hearing, getting it from the media. And, or with me, oftentimes, well, something happens in the city. And this was even before I was moved to mayor. Uh, people would call me and say, you know, what happened with so on, so on, so on, such and such and such. And I didn't know it because I didn't get the notice, uh, and they heard it on the news. So if we could please, um, and then the whole thing of back, uh, earlier this year with the murder-suicide, I had to have someone, you know, not connected to the city at all, call me and say, hey, okay, what's going on? That there was no press release, there was no this, there wasn't that. And I had to say to her, I don't know what you're talking about. And it was true because we didn't get noticed. So I'm just asking that council and the mayor would be notified of anything that's going to hit the news so that we can at least answer our constituents that call, uh, intelligently. So we know a little bit about it. So.
So the law, the lawsuit, I think it might have leaked to the public by maybe the person that, um, that, um, is pursuing litigation. Because, um, literally, I think it was served to the chief and then it was in the paper. You know, we, I hadn't even reviewed it. And so we were trying to figure out how it got leaked. And so we, we think that they got it from that person. So I'm not giving an excuse for that, but there had been talk that one might be coming, one might be coming. And, um, it's almost like it came and everybody knew, you know, at the same time. So it had been happening. So, but we do, I, I, I have been talking with chief about, um, making sure that they follow up even with special reports. Because I found sometimes I wasn't receiving special reports like I should. So, um, I'll continue to, uh, monitor that to make sure that, uh, the mayor and council, um, you know, is aware.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. It's just, just good communication. Yeah. Thank you. All right, um, did I see a hand? No, okay. All right, um. Oh, uh, at the last meeting, I did ask, did your hand go up, Councilmember Wilcoxon? Stop it. Okay, um, I did ask council if they would, uh, pre, uh, suggest some people from their wards for, um, to be on the HRC. Uh, and I haven't received any yet. So if you would, I do have, uh, someone, in talking with someone, someone did recommend a person for, uh, to me from Ward Two. And I will get with the two Ward Two, uh, rep, uh, council people and pass that by them. But we do need to get that commission up and going again. So please, I'm hoping that we'll have, can, uh, possibly even over the, um, holidays, contact some people and be ready to, uh, add some people to that commission come the first of the year. Okay, and I talked about SimCOG videos, HRC, uh, along with, uh, and I'm so happy that people are feeding people during this, uh, during this season. Um, on the December twenty-third, uh, Women and Men Were, uh, Working for Change, I believe is the name of the group. But this is the second year that they will be serving dinner, um, in the, oh gosh, Trojan parking lot, right there, uh, behind Trojan Cleaners, right across from the bus station. And they will have a hot meal for anyone, um, that want, wants to come. And this year they are preparing for a number more of more meals than they did last year. Yesterday, last year, I believe they had two hundred meals. I'm not really quite sure how many. And if anybody would like to, uh, give a donation to this group, um, to help with that, um, just contact me and I'll give you the information on where you can give. The other thing is Park Ridge Center plus nine other locations are all set to open, if not this week, as soon as school reconvenes with as virtual learning labs. So students will be able to come in, a limited number of students. They will be socially distanced and everyone must wear a mask. And they will come in and be able to have some virtual learning. They'll get on the computers, but they will also, there will also be interaction between the students and between staff, which is good. A number of our students are, are failing badly because of trying to do everything virtually without that interaction. So, uh, let's see. The other thing is, it's exciting to know that the COVID-19 vaccination is being distributed and people are beginning to take it. On, I think it was Morning Joe this morning or the viewer somewhere, they interviewed the very first person, first woman in the, in the nation to get the vaccine. And she was a nurse in, a critical care nurse in New York. But for me, it's exciting that the vaccine is being distributed. It's available. And it means that we're beginning to see, not real, not the full light at the end of the tunnel, but we're beginning to see some real light breaking through at the end of the tunnel. We are going to get us on the other side of this pandemic. But in the meantime, just because the vaccine is here, doesn't mean that we can start clustering again. It doesn't mean that we have to get rid of our masks. We still must mask up and keep our distance and wash our hands until it's really gone. If we want to stop it. I, to me, it's, it's just mind boggling, boggling, the number of people that have died from this, from this disease. So anyway, just want to encourage everyone to have a safe, healthy and prosperous, not just health, but wellness. I'm learning to add wellness to, to health, health and wellness and prosperity for this holiday season, for the new year and into the new year. And let's all go into the new year on just excited that the worst of COVID could be behind us. So it could be, I pray that it is. But anyway, happy holidays. Love is the answer. And now I think that's it for me.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I wanted to remind council of the upcoming goal setting sessions. Right now they're tentatively scheduled for January 12th and January 19th, both beginning at six o'clock. And generally the city clerk handles the facilitator. So whatever council desires, I'd ask that you get it to Clerk Halanga so that he can contact a facilitator. If you want an outside facilitator, or if you don't, just please let him know. And I think we should be able to do it in two sessions. And that's all I have for tonight.
Is this our sixth straight council meeting? Am I counting that wrong? And this is our last meeting of the year, correct?
This is the last meeting of the year. Yes.
I mean, six in a row is kind of a, that's why we serve the people here. Amen. Well, I say.
Hey. Sometimes, you know, this is can be one of those things where it's either feast or famine, Councilmember Morgan. Cause there's sometimes that we do get a break where we can maybe go three or four, almost four weeks without a meeting. So it's, it's good. Okay. All right. Council, I mean Clerk Halanga is, is there any communication?
There are no communications.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Ah, yeah. That's who we've been hearing barking. Okay. Been moved. Oh no, before we go, I want to make sure everyone got their invitation today for the all staff of employee holiday party celebration on Friday night at seven. It's virtual, but you should have received that invitation today. It's an email from HR interim director, Kim Jones. So please read it and please, please come, please join us. We've already gotten one RSVP from Mr. Barr. So he's going to be. Did you? Okay. I didn't see yours.
I'm bringing my ugly sweater too.
All right. That's the thing. Yes. She did ask that we all pull out our ugly sweaters. I've got a, I, I hope I didn't give it away. But anyway, hope to see everyone Friday evening and I see you reaching Councilmember Morgan. Is that to say something or just?
I've already made the motion.
I did.
Did anybody support that motion?
I don't think so.
I'll support, I'll support. No, no, Jay did, Jay did. She said I support.
Happy holidays, everybody. Enjoy your day.
All right.
Happy holidays.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Meeting is adjourned.
See you, Chief.
See you.
See you, Joe. See you, Brian.
Good night.
Good night.